Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 7th, 2023 Grants Pass City Council meeting. We start our meetings off with a moment of silence, so please join me for that. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I know that DJ Fazer is going to be out tonight, and Dwayne Yankar is outside. First up, we have a proclamation for Pride Month. Wait a minute for that to get put on the screen here, and I believe we have at least one member of the RCC Rainbow Club here to receive the proclamation. Whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer individuals have had immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country, and whereas the city of Grants Pass is committed to creating a healthy, vibrant place to live, work, and play for all citizens, which includes supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for the LGBTQIA+ people in our diverse community, and whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQIA+ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the Grants Pass LGBTQ community, it is an important, it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Sarah Bristol, Mayor of the City of Grants Pass, hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQIA+ community and call upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. I think my friend and very distant cousin, Finn, is here to receive this and say a few words on behalf of the club, and I'm going to come down and give it to you.
Is this, is this working? Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Finn Franklin. I am the co-president of RCC's Rainbow Club, and I also am on the steering committee of the LGBTQ Listening Project through the Rogue Action Center. I am 19 years old. I am a local student, and I work in Grants Pass. I love this city. I love these people, and I love this area. It's beautiful, and it's amazing, and the people are fun and loving. I am also queer and transgender. When I heard of Mayor Pris, sorry, when I heard of Mayor Bristol's proclamation, I was filled with pride for Grants Pass. In a time where locally and nationally we are seeing rampant harmful rhetoric aimed towards our LGBTQI+ community members, it is vital that we are vocal in our support of our community. I have many friends who are transgender, and I am transgender myself, and I hear often from my friends that they do not feel safe in our area, that they do not feel like they have a future here, that they feel that they are not welcome, that they do not want to work here, or go to school here, or live here, and that they must escape as soon as possible. That really breaks my heart, and I hope that it breaks your heart to some degree as well to hear that young community members feel they have to flee. With proclamations like this, this is just one step closer to making Grants Pass a place where we want to stay, where we want to raise families and take part in our community. I really had a lot more prepared to say, but I think that I am just feeling overwhelmed with emotion and just joy towards this, and I want to say that we're here, we're your family members, we're your friends, we're your coworkers, and your students, and your teachers, and that we will be here, and we have been here since time immemorial, and that even though there may be a very, very vocal group of people who believe that we should not be here, it is a minority, it is a small group, and we are valued community members, and I thank you for valuing us and for making that heard. Thank you, on behalf of Rainbow Club, and on behalf of the LGBTQ community in Southern Oregon, and on behalf of myself as a community member. Thank you.
Thank you, Finn. You did a wonderful job. I'm really proud of you. Thanks. And I'm really sorry that there are some members of our community that don't feel safe, and I know that that's true, and I've received a number of complaints about this particular proclamation, and we have members of the council who aren't sitting at the table tonight, but we're going to keep working on this. So let's move on to our public hearing. We have a resolution supplementing the fiscal year 2023 budget and making appropriations. It's like our finance director is coming up to lead the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go over the fiscal year 23 supplemental budget that is in front of you tonight. The subject in summary, it's going to modify the current adopted budget to increase or decrease appropriations. The supplemental budget will change the appropriations in the follow, in those funds in a relationship to council goals, or to provide cooperative shared leadership involving council staff and community. So part of the background, a supplemental budget can be used when something occurs that was, that was not during the regular budget process. The requirements are we need to publish, publish a formal notice, which happened in the career on May 31st. Resolution must state the need, purpose, and amounts. This can, can be adopted at a regular meeting if the fund is changed less than or equal to 10%. The 10% requirement does not apply to inter-fund transfers. We don't have any of those tonight. A public hearing is required if the change is more than 10%. We do have one fund that is more than 10%, which is why this is a public hearing tonight. First, the general fund, the need, the city obtained a $90,000 grant from the Oregon Department of Human Services to help operate the Grants Pass Emergency Shelter located at 711 Southwest Ramsey, and then the purpose is to recognize these unplanned revenues at the time of budgeting and increase planning services appropriation levels as they are a smaller department in the general fund. This will give them that room before the end of the year. The wastewater fund, there was an unforeseen arbitrage report needed to make sure that the city didn't need to pay taxes on loan proceeds. The transfer of appropriations to the general program operations from contingency is to cover the costs of the reports, which is about $10,000. As far as we were moving, the actual cost of the reports is about $5,300, so there's a little wiggle room here. The solid waste agency fund, there was a pollution liability insurance needed for the Merlin landfill to protect the city from claims. The transfer appropriations of field operations from contingency to cover, cover those insurance costs, and they were about $27,500. In the administrative services fund, there was a termination of the emergency management contract with Josephine County with the hiring of the fire chief, as well as some personnel cash out amounts above budget, transfer appropriations from management services from contingency to cover the contract and personnel costs that are new, which is about $65,000. In fleet, fuel costs are high compared to the budgeted figures and a potential increase in prices as we move towards the summer month. This one is probably more purely just in case. When me and Jason did the math, this was going to be, end up being really close to his budget. As we know, when the summer months come in, gas prices get higher, so this is a, more or less of pre-planning depending on if he can make it underneath his budget amounts. We think that $100,000 is more than enough room, but we just wanted to make sure we didn't blow appropriations. The community development block grant, or CDBG fund, the city had carryforward allocations from CDBG that were not fully appropriated at the time of budgeting. We're going to recognize unplanned revenues at the time of budget and increase the materials and services category for the pass-through expenditures. So, and that, again, this is a requirement for the public hearing tonight, as that is a very large increase. And I would like to make a point of note that we did budget fiscal year 24 completely different because of this kind of communication error that we had between communities development and finance. And so in the future, you shouldn't see this, this issue be such a thing and at a large dollar amount. So we are appropriating actually the entire amount here, just to make sure we can cover it, just in case things happen before June 30th, but there is still going to be some carryover that goes into fiscal year 24, but this is to, again, to make sure we don't blow appropriation levels. In your packet, Exhibit A compares the current budgeted appropriations through resolutions that happened last June. It's also going to give you a column of the adjustments that we're talking about tonight, and then the third column is going to be the revised budget if this gets adopted. So cost implication, each has an appropriation impact. These, the following have a fund balance impact, but were planned for in the fiscal year 24 budget, so those are the three funds of solid waste administrative services and fleet operations. So we did negotiate that as far as preparing the fiscal year 24 budget. So the, the impact of these are minimal to the bottom line. Our call to action date is tonight. You have some alternatives up there to adopt the supplemental budget as recommended, not adopt the supplemental budget, and there's a potential motion up there for you as well. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Vanessa?
It's not really a question, but I had a point of clarification for the community that the termination of the emergency management contract, I just wanted to be clear, that has nothing to do with the Josephine County Commissioner's bizarre and unimaginable decision to merge their emergency manager and IT position. That decision was made long ago, but I was hoping to give our fire chief an opportunity to talk for a moment about his role as emergency manager for our city.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember OJ. Yes, effective in September, when I took over the fire chief position, that also included the emergency manager position. At that time, Emily Ring was also serving as the emergency manager for the county and the city. So we did have an opportunity for approximately three, four months to kind of do a little transition, work together, and understand the roles that were necessary here within the city. They do have, and she did create a brand-new emergency operating plan that incorporated the city and the county together under that one plan, and since January 1st, I have been serving as emergency manager for the city of Grants Pass. And then recently, approximately two months ago, Emily actually left the county, which has now left that position to be filled by the county, and I was going to pretty rely on her pretty heavily to help with some of the additional transition, and at this point, we'll be kind of working on it independently. But I've been looking over the plan very carefully. I feel confident with the background I have in emergency management that the city's in good hands, and we'll be working on it on a continuous basis.
Thank you. Valerie?
Yes, thank you for that, and thank you, Vanessa, for asking that question, because I thought, I was a little unclear too, as to when it happened and how it went about. So how does that work with Jackson County? Do we still have a relationship with Jackson County, or was it, because I know Josephine, Jackson County has, has considered kind of breaking off with Josephine County. Does that affect us?
I've, I've heard some discussions about Jackson County's efforts and cooperative efforts with Josephine. I don't know what types of outcomes any of those discussions have had to this point, but I do know that we were working on a cooperative, coordinated-type wildfire protection plan for both counties, and my understanding is that Jackson County is considering pulling out of that effort. I don't know that that's occurred yet.
Thank you. Joel?
So I was wondering on the landfill and the, do we anticipate a problem with water pollution out there? Or what was the trigger for getting the liability insurance with the water pollution in the, in the groundwater?
Yeah, that's a great question. Counselor King, it was actually renewal of an existing policy that had expired, and so we renewed that. The, the water quality test results are actually decreasing, and we've just been approved for reduced sampling, so we'll likely not renew it at the next five-year period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on this issue? No. We'll close the public hearing and turn it back to you, Council. Any discussion? Vanessa?
I move to approve the resolution to adopt the supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023.
Seconded by Valerie. Any discussion? All right, Vanessa, you made the motion to approve the appropriation. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And DJ is not with us tonight. He's at a, I think it's a dress rehearsal for Shakespeare in the Park, and he asked me to clarify that he, it had nothing to do with the Pride Month proclamation. He just had another obligation. Next up, we have a quasi-judicial hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an application. We actually have two hearings. I'll read the same, read the statement once. So we have to consider a resolution that would vacate the common property line between tax lots 221 and 223 of map number 360507 DB, as well as vacating the common property lines between tax lots 1400, 1500, and 1600 of map number 360517 BD. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition to the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other ex parte information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the application? In this hearing, the decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All testimony which apply in this case are noted in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with a report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This first property line vacation is located on Starlight Place. This is the map here on the right-hand side. Both of the yellow parcels that are shown there are owned by the same property owner. They are attempting to resolve a building issue, the property line, where you see that Z over there, that there is a, a structure that was constructed over that line without a building permit, and now they want to do a deck, and our code doesn't allow folks to come in and, you know, get new permits if you have a, if you have a violation on your property. So to basically address that violation, they're proposing to just remove the property line, which is perfectly acceptable under our code. This is just a view from Starlight, looking at where that building encroachment is located. Here again is just a larger version of the map. The house located on the southern piece, and then there's a couple of mostly vacant, but I believe some kind of pool or other water amenity on the north side. So we did look at the criterion that's required to remove property lines, and there are two of those. They're listed on the screen there, and we found those to be acceptable. We did not receive any public comments after mailing the notice out, and here's your call to action. There's a recommended motion.
Any questions for Brad? No. Is there an applicant who wanted to speak tonight?
We did notify the applicants, both for this one and your next agenda item. I don't believe we got confirmation.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on behalf of this? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? All right, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to you, Council. Valerie?
I move to approve the ordinance vacating the property line between tax lots 221 and 223 of map number 360507 DB. First reading.
Seconded by Dwayne. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Valerie, you made the motion to approve. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Karen, will you read the first reading?
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, vacating the common property line between tax lots 20, 221 and 223 of map number 360507 DB.
Thank you. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance vacating the property line between tax lots 221 and 223, map 3657 DB. Second reading.
Seconded by Vanessa. Any discussion? All right, Rick, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Second reading, please, Karen.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, vacating the common property line between tax lots 221 and 223 of map number 360507 DB.
Thank you. And that brings us to our second hearing. Is that also you, Brad?
So this next item, similar actions as far as proposing to remove a line, but there are actually two property lines in this one, and it's on the Grants Pass High School property. The applicant, Grants Pass High School, or Grants Pass School District Number 7, I should say, wants to consolidate these properties. They're looking at adding some modular classroom facilities there off of Dean, really close to where the current administrative building is. Here is the, the tax assessor's map that kind of shows, you can see in the red here, there's three different parcels. One of them is right here at the corner of A Street and Dean, and then the other two are just north of that. They've historically been used for kind of storage. I guess back when, there was apartments there, and they got demolished, but it's been vacant for a long time. It's currently fenced with chain link fencing, and so they want to, to do some modular classrooms there. And similar to the last one, you can't have your modular classroom buildings crossing existing property lines. So school district owns all three, and they can, they can propose to remove those property lines and then just have a single lot to work with. So here's a layout temporarily of what they're looking at doing. You can see the one modular building can, down here, kind of closer to A Street, and then four others. I think this is going to add about six classrooms plus an administrative building. Here's a look at the property as it sits today, and here are the two criterion that are required to approve property line vacations again. Also, no comments were received for the mailing. That was about 100 feet radius. And then here's the call to action with a recommended motion for you.
Thanks, Brad. Are there any questions? All right, and is there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing and turn it back to you, Council. Valerie?
I move to approve the ordinance vacating the property lines between tax lots 1400, 1500, and 1600 of map number 360517 BD. First reading.
Seconded by Rick. Any discussion? Brian?
I think, because I'm on the school board, I'll abstain from the vote. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Valerie, you made the motion to approve the property land vacation. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero, and I don't know, doesn't abstention count as a unanimous vote? Okay, okay, we're going to rule that that does not count as a unanimous vote, so we're not going to do the second reading, but we'll go ahead and do the first reading.
An ordinance of the council, the city of Grants Pass, vacating the common property line between tax lots 1400, 1500, and 1600 of map number, map number 360517 BD.
Thank you. Always come up with these fun little tech- Thank you. Always come up with these fun little technical questions.
Yes, exactly.
All right, next up, we have our council action items, and first is item A, an ordinance that would add Title 13 regarding safe parking programs to the Grants Pass Municipal Code. And Brad is doing this presentation as well.
And while I'm pulling this up, we, you will not see the copies of this on your dais tonight. I apologize. Apparently, our staff had an issue printing that, but we will pull this up for you, and you can, we'll follow along essentially through the packet item that you have there tonight, walking you through the key elements of that. So we have Amber Neek listed. She is our Housing and Neighborhood Specialist, who has done some of the work and the coordination with our PATH group that's in the community. She's out of town, so I'm going to attempt to kind of give you an overview on this. The subject is the city council's considering approval of an ordinance to add a new title to the municipal code, Title 13, called Safe Parking Programs. It relates to your council goals to enhance community safety by bolstering the availability and number of locations in the city where the unhoused may safely rest overnight. Just a little bit of background, 2020 is the most recent point in time count that are, that the Ucan organization does. The county had a rate of 98.8 homeless individuals per 10,000 residents. That was in 2020, which was well above the state's average. Of the 1,030 homeless individuals in the county, 246 lack shelter. Again, this is from the 2020 point in time count. 289 homeless children were counted there. This follows the 2019 count, in which Josephine County had the highest count of homeless adults with children and homeless children living alone of any Oregon county. In January 2023, the council identified exploring a safe overnight parking program for homeless individuals as one of its strategic plan actions. So the ordinance that is before you tonight is, was put together by staff based on research on a few other communities, but I do want to recognize the partners for the homeless, the PATH group that has been meeting on a regular basis here in the chambers for many months, who did a significant lion's share of the research on this. So here are the five basic elements of the ordinance as it's before you. There's a purpose statement, there's the definitions, there's the overnight camping section, and a transitional overnight parking. Those two, they might sound similar, but they do have two very distinctive elements to them. And then there is a last section about enforcement. So that's the overall structure of the ordinance. For the definitions, the purpose is to identify very clearly what kind of vehicles and items where people can sleep overnight in that we're talking about. So for this, for this chapter, this new title, the term vehicle would include a motorized car, a camper, a trailer, or a recreational vehicle. A tent would be any fabric structures, hard-shelled huts, or similar movable structures. All vehicles must be operable and movable, either by their own power or towing, if designed to be towed. So those are the two key vehicle and tent key terms that are used in the ordinance. So the first of the two main sections, overnight camping, this would only allow up to three vehicles on a parcel that is paved or gravel surface of any size, if it's owned or leased by a religious institution, a nonprofit organization, a business or public entity with permission of the property owner, and less see if applicable. Vehicles may be used by people who lack access to permanent or safe shelter. So the property owner or the less see of that property, again, talking about a religious organization, a nonprofit, et cetera, who allows that camping on their property, must do those two things that are listed there on the screen behind me at the bottom. Provide persons camping overnight with access to sanitary facilities, including but not limited to toilet, hand washing, and trash disposal. So those must be provided. Also, they cannot require payment of any fee, rent, or other monetary charge for that overnight camping. Two other subsections under the overnight camping where we're talking about a maximum of three. The owner who permits that may revoke the permission at any time for any reason. Any person who has permission to sleep on that property as provided shall leave the property immediately after permission has been revoked. The provisions of this section are not intended to limit or otherwise change land uses that may be permitted. And I think that last item may not sound that important, but I think what it kind of is getting at, this is not a program that will be administered by the City of Grants Pass, but rather is an ordinance that is allowing private property owners the authority to proceed with these activities. So the second main category is what is being called in this ordinance Transitional Overnight Parking. So this one would allow up to six vehicles and/or tents, but it does have a number of other requirements that go with that, if you're going to go from three and then go up to six. That first section is very similar to what the first one is in terms of who can do this. This is not allowed on a residential lot. The operator can allow for more than six with a plan that's approved by the city based on the size of the parcel, that there's a supervision plan, sanitation plan, et cetera. Temporary Transitional Overnight Parking must be located a minimum of 150 feet from a childcare facility or school unless the parking accommodations are on a property that is owned or leased by the childcare facility or school. And just to reiterate, these are all draft languages. None of this is being guided or mandated through any kind of state rules. So, for example, that 150-foot distance is completely up to the city council in terms of what that buffer would be. Again, talking about the Transitional Overnight one, that will allow up to six, these are intended to be used by individuals, families, or households on a limited basis for seasonal emergency or transitional housing purposes. The Transitional Overnight Parking may provide parking facilities, walkways, and access to water, toilet, shower, laundry, cooking, telephone, et cetera, either through that or through, on the property or through some kind of shared agreement. The sanitation or other facilities added to the location must be temporary and removable. So again, that's emphasizing the transitional temporary nature of what these uses are, not permanent. And here's really kind of the crux of what this one is. There's a lot of language here, but I thought it was important to put it on here, just so everybody's aware of this Transitional Overnight category, what it would require. So you essentially would have to apply for and receive authorization from the city manager or the city manager's designee, and agree to abide by all the conditions. There would be, they have to provide access to sanitary facilities, including but not limited to those same ones, toilet, hand washing, and trash disposal at all hours, that people are authorized to be present on the property. Number three, provide supervision, case management, or supportive services to campers. Supervision must include at a minimum nightly contact with each camper. That is not a requirement, as you may recall, on the camping overnight, the three, the maximum of three. But in this case, if you go up to the six, you would have to provide and show how you're going to have some kind of case management or supportive services that are offered on the property. Fourth, develop policies that set out how individuals may stay at the site will be selected, so that would have to be given to the city ahead of time. How are you going to do that? The number of continuous days that somebody could be at the site, and the hours that the overnight campers may stay at the site, in addition to 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. What supervision will be provided, and what structures or other items would be placed at the site. Number five is not require payment. That's similar to the other one. And number six, this is dealing with notifying the public no sooner than 45 days and at least 20 days prior to the overnight occurrence happening. Provide notice of the intention to do this overnight stay on, to each property owner and occupant of each adjacent property. So there would have to be a notice given to the adjacent property owners that they're, that you're intending to have your property used for overnight stays. And then additionally, every night, any person stays overnight, post a notice at a prominent location that is visible from the public right of way on the site. And then your code goes into some of the other details. So that's really kind of the focus of the ordinance. There is an enforcement section that is included in there. The last couple of slides, just going to give you a little bit more background. So the partners assisting the homeless, the PATH group, got feedback on other successful programs in Oregon, presented an overview of this. The, there was two programs that are, that were interviewed in Ashland. The, and I'm sure I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, Havura, Sheer Hadash, and the First Presbyterian of Ashland, two locations that have been operating similar programs for a while. PATH members contacted them and actually did a survey. The city attorney reviewed the proposed safe parking program, May 25th, made comments. We addressed some of those. And then Police Chief Hensman also reviewed it and had kind of three main pieces that were brought up as a result of his read on it. Should the program be for only vehicles and not for tents and other shelters? That's a question, and these first two items are for your consideration and your deliberation. There's no recommendation being put forward by staff on these first two. You could consider the location to be more than 150 feet distance from a childcare facility or school, and then changing the violation to an infraction, which would be similar to a parking fine. So if there are any issues and officers go to the site as a result of whatever it is, a phone call or a complaint, if there is a violation, then having that be similar to a parking fine. We did amend the original plan based on that third one, but again, the first two, we left open-ended in the draft. As far as the cost implication to this for the city, the main implications are really on staffing. The first one would be to update the municipal code, website links, you know, providing information to the public. And then secondly, administering the program on that second item, the transitional one, since they do have to apply for, to the city, then, you know, obviously, we're just going to take some time to review those applications. And then police department staff having some enforcement, that's, those are really the main cost implications that we would envision with this. So the call to action is completely at council's discretion tonight. There are several alternatives there. You could adopt it as presented, you could make amendments, you could delay, and then the fourth one, take no action.
Thank you, Brad. Questions? Rob than Rick?
So you say if there's a violation and the police come out, it would be, I guess, similar to a ticket. So who would pay that fine? Would it be property owner or the vehicle owner? Who's the ticket given to?
I'm going to look to the city attorney and the police chief if they want to provide feedback on that.
And the follow-up on that would be, if the ticket is given to the vehicle owner, is the property owner apprised of the violation, apprised of the situation?
So I'd anticipate that the ticket would probably go to the vehicle owner, depending on, it would honestly also depend on the nature of the violation. If it's a violation associated with the vehicle, then it would definitely, most likely, go to the, to the vehicle owner. I don't see why the property owner wouldn't be apprised of anything like that. I mean, it's happening on their property. I think that they would be, I'm pretty sure that officers would let them know.
Yeah, and this is uncharted territory for us. So as I was reviewing it, as you see on Section 3, I assumed it would be the individual that is in the vehicle that would be responsible for the fine, AKA, that's why I didn't think a $295 fee was appropriate, and that a parking ticket would be more appropriate under these circumstances.
So I guess, a question for Augustus then, would be, I guess that we can somehow, if we wanted to move forward this, craft this to make sure that the property owner would also be apprised of the ticket that happens on their property?
Yeah, we can add a provision to that effect.
Rick?
Thank you for the presentation. My impression is that the jurisdictions and the agencies in Ashland do not charge for the processing of the application as well.
Are you talking to the City of Ashland?
Yes.
I'm going to have to defer to anybody that might be here from PATH who maybe spoke with them, because I do, I do not know the answer to that. They'll have to come to a public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Joel, then Dwayne?
I had three comments. I'll just go with the first one. Medicaid now pays for temporary housing. Why would we put in there that the landowner could not receive a fee for those services provided? It seems like that would incentivize the service at no cost to the person involved, and the private sector can make money off of doing it, which is an incentive. And so I wondered why we would go to the length to say that you couldn't charge a fee when Medicaid actually provides funding for temporary housing.
Right. I think it's a valid point, counselor. And honestly, the crux of what you have before you is trying to, you know, mimic some other jurisdictions in the state of Oregon who have been doing this, and I-
That's a recent change. That just came in this year, so they probably did it before this year. So anyway, I would encourage that we would strike that, that if they wanted to charge and process those Medicaid claims, that they could do so and provide even better service. The other thing that I'm, it seems like it's kind of broad to me in terms of any zoning in the county, including the business district. One of the things that we ran into with the park, you know, there's legitimate needs by people that don't have homes. There's also legitimate needs by the general public, and we need to account for both of those, not just one or one at the expense of the other. Either way, would not be a-
Your question?
Yeah. So the question is, it seems like this is too open-ended in terms of area and types to accommodate all of our citizens' needs in the county, not just, not just those without homes.
Is that a question for Brad?
So, yeah.
I can clarify-
This is discussion. You know, I apologize, Mayor.
That's just question time.
I apologize. So the question, so the question would be, what alternatives do we have that would protect those other interests as well?
Right. I was reading through your comments there, Counselor. So this is not a, this is not a land use ordinance. So, you know, it is, it is not a, regulated by the zoning code. Now, if you, you know, as soon as you start going into that, then of course, you have a lot of new regulations and mechanisms that would be used to setbacks and- a lot of new regulations and mechanisms that would be used to setbacks and hours of operation and other things like that. But I think, you know, it's intentionally not that. It is proposed to be in the municipal code and not a land use action. So it does give you a lot more discretion in terms of setting the parameters.
Dwayne, then Val, then Brian?
My question's for Chief Hensman, since he participated a little bit in this, is I wanted to know how this is going to affect his department on already strained resources and stuff like that that are already happening, on the lack of officers to deal with some of this stuff.
It's a good question. I don't know yet. If you are asking me, am I concerned that there's yet another ordinance to enforce within the city? The answer would be yes. And we are already a strained department. But I don't know how many violations this is going to incur. Hopefully, that answers your question. I'm trying to be delicate. This is a delicate topic.
I think you pretty much answered my question. Thank you.
Valerie?
Yeah, I think the thing that I'm kind of confused about is that, is, because you talk about tents and yurts. Is a yurt movable? I mean, I always think of a yurt being in a park or something, and I, if it's overnight, I'm assuming that if you have something, that it needs to be able to be moved out during the day. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you just broadened the definition, but technically, I don't know. Personally, I can't imagine somebody putting a yurt or a tent. It seems like we have enough people, I understand, with vehicles that need placed to park. And that makes sense to me, that the tent part of it or the yurt seems kind of open-ended.
Which I think the definition is trying to get at clarifying, you know, just kind of the difference between a tent and, which you're right, it would not be able to be permanently attached to the ground in any way. It would still have to be temporary, like a tent, but-
It has to be movable on its own.
It has to be movable on its own.
So it can't be picked up and moved. It has to be movable on its own. Correct? I wish to me, a tent, I've never seen a movable tent, so that's, I guess, why I'm confused. So-
Well, I think in this case, movable meaning that you, an individual could relatively quickly and with ease, you know, collapse the item and remove it from the property if they were asked to.
Okay.
You know, as compared to, you know, taking a day or two to somehow disassemble it. So that would mean, you know, but I think this is getting to the type of structure, you know, maybe you often like a wooden frame or some other canvas material rather than a nylon material, you know, getting to that. But they're all going to need to be movable under this ordinance in a short timeframe by the individual.
And on the three, if I'm not mistaken, does it depend upon the person who is running their own program? Because that's basically what this is. It's not run by the city. It's run by the church or whatever organization, whatever wants to do it on their public or gravel parking lot, so they can do that. So it's called, it's overnight. So does that mean they have to leave during the day? Or that has to be specifically spelled out?
So that is not addressed in the ordinance that's before you in terms of that timeframe, other than if you do the transitional one.
Six, right, the six.
You're going to have to spell out exactly what the rules are for the timeframes and the hours of operation, et cetera.
So on the three, it's basically just between the person and whatever, and it's not spelled out. But on the six, it's spelled out that they have to have a contract, kind of, that states how long they can be there consecutively and how, what hours they can be there. Okay.
Yep.
I just want to clarify that. Brian?
Thank you. Just to kind of follow up on what Valerie was asking, the way I read this is they don't have to break down their structure or move their vehicle every day if the property owner does not require them to, because it says in here, they may stay at the site from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. But it says that the owner can, in Section C4, it talks about how the owner can basically set the hours. Am I reading that right?
Correct. Yes. So there has to be policies, yes, that are written and given to the individual before they, you know, stay that first night, that would clarify those terms.
Okay. I also, maybe I missed it, but I don't see that there's anything in here regarding, like a timeframe of notice, like for the applicant to the person staying, as far as like, you know, for example, you have 24 hours to leave the property or something like that. How, is there nothing, there's nothing like that in there?
There's not. It gives the owner full discretion at any time.
And then I assume with the more than three-vehicle situation where people have to apply, that the city will be receiving those applications, reviewing those applications, and have some sort of file or database that has all of those for reference? Is that accurate?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then for three or fewer, we will not?
For three or fewer, we would not be requiring any kind of written notification to be submitted to the city.
Correct.
That would be purely an enforcement kind of situation where, you know, between the property owner and the campers, or if there's a complaint, between the police department and the campers.
Okay. Thank you.
Vanessa, then Rob?
On page 53, Item C, number one, it does, there's a clause about acceptance of liability and demonstration of insurance coverage in acceptable amounts to the city. Is there a policy elsewhere that outlines what the acceptable amounts would be, or was that intentionally left open?
It's a good question, Augustus. Do you have a comment on that?
That was intentionally left open. I think that that, when we were looking at other jurisdictions, that provision probably served the purpose of taking into account the different size of businesses that might be involved with this. Just because you can have three doesn't necessarily mean that you will have three. There's different variables. So I think that that's why it was left intentionally open.
Okay, I understand. We want to remain flexible on that. Okay. And then I did have a question. I know that the city isn't overseeing this, but I had a question for Chief Hensman. I know CRT makes a lot of contact with people that are unhoused in the community. Has there been any consideration of potential unofficial referral program that, you know, hey, you look like you're interested in getting back into a house. I know of this parking lot that's open. I'd like to connect you.
Yeah, it's a, I think the answer is yes, that we already do that. We've been doing that for years, long before we've even had this problem. We've always referred people to where we think their needs lay. So that's just part of our fabric. We would do it anyway.
Okay. So then from there, we would just ask that any host participants would get in touch with us and let us know that they're opening their doors or their parking lot, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely. And if this was something that was built into the day-to-day operation somewhere in the city, we would know about it, I'm sure. And then we would, that would just be part of our day-to-day, when they're out and about, helping people. So, and then also too, you've got all the different service providers, like YouCan, Adapt, and Options, and all these other places, then we all work together, almost like a multidisciplinary team to help people. So it's all kind of part of the internal fabric, or it would be, if that helped.
Yes, thank you. Rob?
So what right now prevents any property owner from just inviting people to park on their property without filling out any paperwork or the city being involved in any way? In other words, why are we doing this?
I mean, we have explicit rules for parking long-term, you know, in an RV. We do have a section in the municipal code related to RV parking. There is nothing that addresses this. I mean, I think one approach, one way of approaching it is to think of it as a property owner. And, you know, if you're maybe hedging and you're wondering, is there any questions on this? To have it explicitly called out in the municipal code would provide you some level of assurance and guidance that we certainly don't have today. Amber would have been better at answering that question, and I don't know if either the Chief or Augustus have any other thoughts.
I do have thoughts. I have a lot of thoughts. I actually did think about that question, that very question, and I remember when I was actually patrolling streets in general, if I were to come across somebody that was sleeping overnight, we typically thought somebody, it might have been kids messing around or something, and when we found out it was just a family, you typically didn't get a complaint, you just drove away, and then they were gone the next day. But times have changed. And I, my guess is that still occurs in communities across the US, but that was my thought, and since you asked, I shared.
Any other questions? Valerie?
No. It's more of a discussion. It's not a question.
All right. Any questions? Dwayne?
One for Chief there. Is there any ordinance against businesses or like the Newman Church having a tent set up in their yard already that says they can't do that?
I don't know the answer to that. I would have to look. I don't think it's in, I think it's in the development code. I don't think it's in the municipal code.
Don't they already do that, though?
Do people set up tents in their property?
Yeah, like across the street.
I've seen places setting up stuff, sure. But I would also play devil's advocate, and I know that families set up tents in their front yard for their kids. So just kind of throwing that out there. But I don't know the answer to the question, whether it's a development code or if it's even there, so I'd look to Aaron for that.
Yeah, it's likely development code that might address that, and that's when we're talking about temporary nature structures. One way to bolster that is, and if you look at the way this code is written and the way Brad explained it, this is really provided to you for the most flexibility. And it's not just cars, but it's also the opportunity for people to also provide an outlet for tents. And in temporary structures in nature. And if we're concerned about those temporary structures in nature, one thing you could potentially do is add to the code language that requires that they be taken down and erected only during resting hours, that you've defined as resting hours. The yurt question is a good question. If a yurt is allowed, even though it's temporary in nature and doesn't have a foundation, does that mean it could stay there for three months and just sit there like that? Or if something like that is going to be required for residential, do you want it to be taken down on a daily basis? So that's something to consider. And/or consider tent parking at all, if you want it just be car parking. So those are two things that you might want to consider.
Any other questions? All right. This item is open for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to comment, I'll give you some parameters first, because we may have new people tonight, but we have three minutes of public comment. When the light goes off, there's a light there on the podium. When the yellow light goes off, you have 30 seconds left, so don't panic. But when the red light goes off, please end your comments. You can ask questions that the council will hear, and they won't answer. If they want to bring up that question afterwards, when we're in council discussion, they can do that. But it's not a back-and-forth discussion. It's just an opportunity for you to comment. So go ahead, and I see several of you with hands. Go ahead and line up, and we'll just take you as you come. Please state your name and whether or not you're a city resident.
Yes, my name's Ruth Daley, and I live in Grants Pass.
Ruth, can you make sure the mic is on? There should be a light at the bottom when it's on.
There's a light on the top.
Okay. There you go.
I'm going to say this. I can answer a bunch of questions also at one time, and Amber has contracts and all kinds of stuff that you guys can see about how people structure these. But I'm just here to support the program. I assisted PATH in researching established programs in cities and spoke with churches, all of which have had successful programs for three to four years. They provide a good template for which, to initiate a program here in Grants Pass. As a volunteer for local shelters, I've had the opportunity to speak with many of our unhoused neighbors. Many are living in their cars due to not being able to afford rent. Many are working. Many are elderly and living on their social security. Many are disabled, in a manner that prohibits them from being able to work. And yes, there are families and children. A common thread for these neighbors is needing a place to park that provides safety, as those living in vehicles, parking on city streets are subject to ridicule and intimidation from members of our community. Additionally, having a place to park their vehicle that is consistent and allows for being clean, using bathroom facilities, and a place to dispose of their trash is imperative. In regard to Chief Hensman's questions, in my research, I found that there are programs that don't allow tents. Though knowing that participants are vetted for their appropriateness to the program, a tent could be a viable option, should a host site allow it. The churches that I spoke with all have schools on their premises and have had no issues. So I appreciate the ordinance specifying that schools on the premises of religious or public host sites are acceptable. And I'm just going to finish this with some thoughts from Pastor Chris Kramer of Nativity Lutheran Church in Bend, which has had a successful program for three years. We are partnered with the city of Bend and Reach to run safe parking. Bend police knows of our location, but we find that the security conversation is the opposite of what many people might imagine. Safe parking households are so grateful for the opportunity we provide, that they are vigilant of our space, calling police when unseemly or strange activity happens on nativity property. The truth is, safe parking makes our property more secure, because they are vigilant and present around the clock. As an overview, I would offer this. Safe parking is not a campground, nor is it a low-bar shelter opportunity. Safe parking is a selective opportunity, extended by invitation only, to a very finite number of households living outside, who are hand-selected by a local case management agency, because they would benefit from our program and live well within our parameters. We offer one slice of what must be a very large and carefully crafted response to regional homelessness. Thank you. And I'd be happy to answer the question.
Sarah, I'd like to ask you a question.
Okay. All right, Rob has a question.
So you seem like you've done some research on this, so-
Yes.
Since we've had some unanswered questions from staff, maybe you can help us.
Yeah, I'll try.
So what benefit do, say, a church in Bend get from actually having a city program as contrasted with them just doing it on their own, them just allowing people to park on there and having their own rules and regulations?
Sure. Well, the benefit is to have something more controlled. All of these programs, the participants that come to stay are vetted by an agency in town, something like UCAN. Those agencies help the person to understand the rules, fill out the contract, then that agency sends them to a particular host that's doing it. So those host sites know that the people coming there are appropriate to stay there. They have to be able to stay clean. They can't be having trash everywhere. There's going to be a trash receptacle. There's going to be a porta potty with sanitation that only they can use, because they have codes. I don't know if you got everything, but if you read the interviews with the churches in Ashland, and then there is another one of this church in Bend. So it's a much more controlled atmosphere, and that they know that the people that have sent them there, the agency, that these people are appropriate to stay there. Yeah.
Thank you. Dwayne?
Do you know the location of that church? Is it in the downtown area, or is it in the outskirts of that one in Bend?
I think the Presby, oh, in Bend? I'm not sure. Now, the Bend, it's different than the Ashland ones. The Ashland churches have people stay there at night. They leave in the morning. And they do all have to sign contracts. They have to read the rules and everything and do what's appropriate. The Bend one that I spoke to, they are actually one of the ones that allow up to six vehicles. They have four right now. And they actually allow a motor home and a car if they have it. But I don't know where they are in relation in the city. And they've been doing it three years, and they said it's been wonderful. So they've all had some- They all, they've all had some issues at one time or another, but.
Rick?
So, in your survey, you mentioned two churches in Ashland in one place and Bend. Like, does Bend have 10 sites, or there's only one church?
Well, when I talked to the, I talked to some people in the city, too, I can't remember her name, but she was the head of the shelters, I think they have four sites at this time. And in Ashland, the reason they're all churches is because it was first brought by the Unitarian Church, and the city was like, okay, good, you guys try it with the churches, and then, you know, we could move it on, but that does make it pretty restrictive.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Eno, I'm also, I'm in Grants Pass, I'm also with PATH. I don't, I didn't do the deep dive that Ruth did, because I knew she was doing it, but I, I think what I would emphasize, and what they seem to be emphasizing in Ashland, is that this is transitional, you know, these people that apply to have the parking spaces are expecting to be housed at some point, and this kind of gives them a period to safely rest in the meantime, until they're able to find something they can afford, which Amber says is next to impossible, but, and I want to thank you very much for looking at this and, and developing this ordinance and hopefully passing it, and I really appreciate, you know, including PATH in this research. I did, I, another member of PATH and I did speak with one of the nonprofits about the program, but just, just briefly, and they were interested in being a host site, you know, that was before the ordinance was written, so I'm not quite sure, but at least there's definitely one group that's interested. And I think that we need to pursue everything we can think of to deal with and address the homelessness issue, and this is just one of many, many solutions that have been considered, and, you know, there are successes out there, and I'm hoping we can do the same, and because this, I believe that this ordinance that was written up was very thorough, so hopefully it will be successful, it has a lot of rules, and I don't think we're going to run into too many issues because it's, there's a lot that's gone into it so far, but that's my thought. Please consider it.
I'm Julie Hartford from Grants Pass, and I am going to discard a lot of my remarks and answer some of your questions, I'm sorry they're not in order. First, Councilmember Yunker had a question about security, and I have a quote from Pastor Chris Kramer of the Nativity Lutheran Church in Bend, and that was in your packet, he said, "We find that the security conversation is the opposite of what many people might imagine. Safe parking households are so grateful for the opportunity we provide that they're vigilant, vigilant, sorry, of our space, calling police when unseemly or strange activity happens on nativity property. The truth is this, safe parking makes our property more secure because they're vigilant and present, and present around the clock." To Councilmember Pell, he asked why. A couple other reasons why to do this would be because it would formalize it, this gives the, the host sites the duty to notice the neighbors and get their buy-in. Also, it makes it so that it's not officially illegal to do, so those are all reasons to do it also. To answer Councilmember King's questions about the businesses, host properties apply with the city to get, to be able to do this, and then the, the people that want to take advantage of this program, they actually apply, and the business, if you, if you choose to go with businesses, some communities, as, as Ruth said, only go with churches, if, if they decide to do this, they get to put more rules on top of whatever the basic rules are. For example, they might not have large parking spots, and so they might want to restrict larger RVs, something like that. Also, of the fee, the fee part of it makes you, it kind of like you're running a campground, so we did a lot of research, and I can't speak real articulately to that, but I would discourage the fee part. Often, these people are recently evicted and are saving up for, to make a deposit, and so they're just going to their next place, they just can't afford to go directly to that. And I'll go quickly, something that covers both Valerie's question and Chief Hensman, PATH did not look into the camping portion of it, we were doing the, strictly the safe parking, so if that was something that you guys were interested in, I would encourage you to amend it to include that, and I have so much more I could say, but I won't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Dapper, I'm a city resident, and I'm wondering if the neighboring properties and business owners would have any say in whether they're going to do that, because my only study on this is living next to Tussin Park, and I can tell you, it's not fun. Is it just going to be, hey, meet your new neighbors? Because the Chief Hensman can speak. Day and night, we're calling the police because they're fighting down there, they're shaking our windows, waking us up in the middle of the night, shaking our windows with the music. The problem isn't homeless people, this is a separate thing, homeless people are people that need help getting back in homes. The problem is the drug addicts that choose to live in these parks and in these places, it's a chosen lifestyle for most of them, and I can tell you, for the businesses, to not give them a say, and all the crime that goes on in that street, the break-ins, I think people should have a say, or at least give them time to shutter their business and leave to go somewhere better. We had a meeting at Tussin Park, we have a meeting every other Sunday, we're sitting there, and in this tent, right in the middle of the day, is someone sitting in their tent smoking meth or heroin or something, I know it ain't pot, I'm, I know the difference, just right out in the open, just right in the park, where kids are playing, trying to play baseball, there's tents all over, people doing drugs out in the open. This is the problem that needs help, not, you know, we need to help the true homeless people that got burned out or divorced in, hell, I almost got divorced out of my house once, had to buy it all over again, stuff happens. But the 95% of them that are drug addicts out there shooting up and causing crimes and threatening people that they can't go across the pedestrian bridge anymore, that's not a neighbor I'd want to wish on anybody. Thank you.
Please, no applause. All right, Holly?
Holly Morton, Josephine County and, and Grants Pass. I would have to say right off the top, I got a chance to sit into the PATH meeting, and a more lovely, caring group of people you're never going to meet. I mean, these are wonderful people, and I know they're trying to do the right thing. But I have a couple of questions, some things that I've concerned about. One of them would be neighbor permissions, you know, you say that they have to apply and that kind of thing, but I think that neighbors should really buy into this and should have a structure for making complaints if something comes up, and for there to be remedy about that, because I think the citizens of this community are getting kind of tired of a lot of these things being shoved down their throats, and so I think we need to, we need to give people a say. I'm assuming that with the vetting, that sounds like a great idea, you're not going to have a lot of people with drug and alcohol problems. That would be hopeful, because those folks, as we all know, do create certain kinds of disturbances and problems for themselves and others, so the, the vetting problem would have to be very careful. Insurance, I'm curious about who would pay the insurance on this, because, you know, there are going to be things that happen, people fall out of the door of their motor home and take a big dive, who's going to, who picks up the tab for, for the insurance? Is this a city problem? You know, I, I'd really like to get that figured out. I heard about toilets and, and hand washing, but I didn't really hear about showers and that sort of thing, and so I'm trying to figure out, if you're really talking about cleanliness, where are these folks going to shower? Another thing I'm wondering about is, this kind of thing will attract more people, homeless people, to our community. Is there any way that we could establish that these need to be people from our community that remain in our community, rather than Grants Pass becoming sort of a destination resort for homeless people, people with different kinds of problems? Because I think we've pretty much got enough problems. I think there are so many unanswered questions just based on the presentation that I heard, that I, I hope that you would table this a little bit, I hope you're not planning on voting on it tonight, that you table it, take a little bit of a look at some of the things that need to be addressed, and I'm sure glad I don't have to write the marketing plan for this, because this is one of those programs that, you know, I would hate to write the marketing plan, because it's going to be a tough liftoff. Anyway, thank you.
Brenda Sissing, Josephine County. This is not a far reach in my mind to make this happen. I think it's actually one of the better ideas that I have heard from anything. In San Diego, they have a fenced lot, the gate opens at 6:00 a.m., closes at 9:30 p.m., and if you're not in your place by 9:30, you're locked out. They have an open kitchen, and they're, it, when, when cars and these people in vans, van dwellers, car dwellers, whatever, hard shell homes is what they call them, they go in and they become like a smaller community, which they are accountable to their neighbor. They have ordinances of silence after a certain hour, because most of these people are working people, they're only living in their vehicles. I was a truck driver for 29 years, I know what it's like to live in a small place. I had the sleeper, sleeper thingy back here, I could give a workshop on public, I mean, on private hygiene, I could teach people how to actually use facilities in a clean and healthy way. I could do that, I've done it for 29 years. I used to coach other women that were truck drivers, how to maintain when you're on the road. That's a different kind of a thing, but same, I was employment, but the housing idea was the same thing. But when we went to truck stops, we paid $20 a night to get in for a nice, safe place to go in and park your truck and go to sleep without possible harassment from lot lizards or whoever you want to say on that. So, with saying that, I think this is a pretty good idea under regulations and scrutiny, because people will have broke-down vans, abandoned vehicles, and all kinds of stuff as people that live on the bottom end of society have, they have their problems, but I think it's a doable thing to get people into their vans and/or their cars. If you go to Southern California to the slabs on RV cheap living on, on the YouTube, you see people living in Kia cars, tiny little things, and they make it work, that's what they can afford. I think this is a grand idea, let people live in their cars, vans, or whatever they've got, I'm not so hot on the tents, but whatever. Okay. Any, any questions? I love this subject, I really do. Ask me about the irk.
I don't think they have any questions, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Sandy Rourke, I'm a resident of Grants Pass, and there's going to be a lot of questions that need to be answered with this, and one of them, so I think that the owners and the business owners need to know who's going to be living next to them, get their permission also. But one of the things that brought up that made me think, when you talk about Medicare possibly paying, I don't see them, oh, Medicare, possibly paying, taking out those checks to pay for the people who are letting them reside in their property? Was it you that said that? All right, I want, with that, I want to make sure both sides are safe. I want to make sure if this is paid in a month in advance, I want to make sure they get their whole month in advance of, of payment there, not the person that's kicking them off, or, or the person leaves and doesn't, if they do leave ahead of time, do they get their money reimbursed? So that's my, that's my only, as financial thing, is to make sure that nobody's being taken advantage of, that you get what you paid for and everybody's safe. That's my only question, or that's my statement.
Good evening, my name is Richard Flora, I live in Colonial Valley. First, I'd like to thank the city manager, Erin Cubic, the city attorney, Augustus Ogoo, the chief of police, Warren Hensman, and police captain, Todd Moran, and all of their staff who put together last Thursday's presentation and Q and A. These gentlemen did a wonderful job of describing why we have people camping in our parks, how federal, state, and local laws, lawsuits and court orders affect the situation we have here in Grants Pass, and what the city has done and is doing to rectify the situation. Also, I'd like to thank the city staff who put together the safe parking programs that you will be voting on today, or at least considering. If this ordinance or some version of it is enacted by this city council, it will be a big step forward in providing safe refuge for at least a portion of our unhoused population who have nowhere to live other than their vehicles. I have a few questions and comments about the ordinance and the application to operate a transitional overnight parking location. Shouldn't section 1301040 be titled Transitional Overnight Parking/Camping Accommodations? The current title does not mention camping, since it allows tents, hard shell huts, and similar movable structures that are normally not parked. It seems, including the term camping in the title of the section, would be appropriate. The application mentions yurts and cabins under types of accommodations. Cabins typically are not movable, is this consistent with the ordinance? The ordinance indicates that overnight and transitional overnight parking may be in a parking lot or on paved or gravel surface. The safe parking program's application indicates that the accommodations must be located on a paved or gravel surface. Does this rule out using a lawn, a platform, or a deck, or any other kind of surface for a tender hut? The application also indicates that no permanent improvements to property are allowed. Does this apply to the provider, the camper, or both? Does this mean that a provider could not add restrooms, showers, laundry facilities, or some other amenities that would be beneficial to the campers? The ordinance mentions a timeframe for overnight camping is 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. A broader range such as 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. might be more beneficial to the, the unhoused with small children. I assume that providers may develop their own set of rules and guidelines for vetting potential overnight and transitional overnight campers, as well as rules that must be followed when staying on the premises, as long as they are within federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. I encourage each of you to seriously consider how this ordinance will help some of our unhoused to find safe and secure place to rest at night, making their lives a little easier, and how at the same time, the rest of our community will benefit from having fewer unknown vehicles parked in front of their homes. I urge each of you to vote yes on this ordinance or some version of it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adriana, I live in the city, I didn't really think I was going to talk on this, but we had just had a speaker mention paying in a month in advance, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, although you probably all know, Chapter 90 of the Organized Statute is landlord-tenant, there is a section that requires persons who own their own recreational vehicle, if they are paying rent to somebody else to live on their property, then there is a six-month eviction notice that gets required, so if you guys wanted to kind of avoid that, maybe look into the part of Chapter 90 that talks about, oh, I don't remember the exact language, but it's basically what gives hotels the authority to let people come and go, it's like temporary occupancy, so just something to consider.
Good evening, councilors and all staff members. I, I've lived in Josephine County-
Hey, Mark, can you tell us your name?
Mark Seligman, Selma, Oregon. I've lived in Josephine County 28 years. I probably spend more, half my time in the city limits, so I just want to dispel any questions regarding why am I interested? I live in Selma, I work in town sometimes, I eat here, I play pickleball here, I do lots of things here. of things here, so I'm concerned with here. Regarding the safe ordinance, the safe parking ordinance, I think it's an excellent idea. I also think Commissioner Pell's, excuse me, Councilor Pell's idea is also an excellent one. I believe in private property rights. I believe property owners, if they want to do something compassionate and they want to let someone stay on their land, as long as the neighbors get a voice in it, if the neighbors have no problem with it, I think this is an excellent idea. Sometimes government gets involved and over-regulates things. One thing we can all agree on, you have a homeless problem in the city of Grants Pass, whether you're pro-homeless, anti-homeless, and anything, any tool you can use to lessen this is valuable. You're always going to have your naysayers, well, you can't do this, and you can't do that, and you can't do that, and then basically, you're at the position you're at now, you're doing nothing. So I urge you to vote yes on this, and I urge you also to let property owners determine what goes on on their land as long as the neighbors, they could sign a form. We have no objection to so-and-so having two or three, you know, campers on his property. But the bottom line is, something needs to be done, and this is a combination of elements here would be excellent. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Slowdemaker. I'm a resident here of Grants Pass. One of the things I regularly say in talking about the homeless situation is it's multifaceted, and we really want to find that line between compassion and enabling. My opinion is that this is a good framework, a good discussion, and a good start point. My route to work every morning, I go up Mill Street and J Street, and with the amount of vehicles that are parked there overnight, there's times we've got to pull over and let oncoming traffic come by. It's a safety hazard. And my hope is that the intent here is to find folks that are camping on the street or staying on the street and get them to one of these places. The other thing I'll say that really intrigued me, I saw this online on the agenda, and I thought, I want to hear more. The framework of this is attractive to a church like I go to, which has about 150 people, because now what you're doing is saying, here's something you can do. If we've got three vehicles there, that's not a lot of overhead to set up a group that we can make sure that we're touching bases and passing that information on regularly. And I would like to think that there are several places around this town that would sit there and say, how do we do our little part? How do we find that area of compassion? And again, this is, the homeless thing is so huge, but I think you're laser-focused on one area that has a great opportunity for success. So my encouragement is to continue to poke at this thing, see if it has merit, and explore it a little bit further. Thank you.
My name's Barbara. Hi.
Speak up and pull this down close to your mouth, maybe.
I live on the other side of Sixth Street Bridge where they camp. It's horrifying. I'm scared. These guys depend on me. Get them out of my parks. The kids can't even go back there and play. They can't cross the street and play. I find shirrages by the fence. They're shooting up right in my backyard, little whorehouses. It's horrifying. What are we going to do? It keeps on dying in my, that's not right. You know, there's got to be someplace over by the old bus station, big lot, you know. They got to be able to go somewhere. Let our parks be open again.
It looks like we are done with public comment here, so let's turn this back to you, council for discussion on the Safe Parking Program. Joel.
So the one thing I'm struggling with, I know like Edgewater a while back had a program like that without any city regulation, and it was fairly large. I don't know how many people it had, but it had over 50. And they didn't, I mean, they were allowed to do it, there was no problem. The coordination with Ucan can occur regardless. The one thing about costs, if Medicaid's paying for it, if they're an All Care patient or if they're a state Medicaid patient, Ucan or All Care get the money for it regardless. So they might as well pay it, some of it, to the providers to provide some incentive to keep that service going, because All Care gets paid for it regardless if they find that person a home, just like they do with the motels and that kind of thing. So the thing I'm struggling with, if it's already occurring, what's the need to additionally regulate it? And I know our church can take it up with the elders. I know there's several people in the church that already are housing people at their house, which this wouldn't allow, and have their RV parked at their house, and that's already happening too. So what I'm struggling with is, what is the need for additional regulation? I don't understand what that need is, because we can do that now. You can coordinate with Ucan now. Ucan can go out there and talk to the churches now. It doesn't need a city code to say that, and we can help people now. So I would encourage us to change our compass a little bit and our focus and get something done, and not depend on a city regulation to think that's going to get it done, because it's not, because we can do it now. I'm perplexed.
Twain, then Brian, then Valerie.
I just have a few things. I look at this today, and I just don't think it's ready for, if we were going to pass it, or people are at the councils, the majority of this, it has a lot of work that needs to be done to this ordinance. If that's what the council wants to go, I just don't think there's so much here. I really think it needs to go to a workshop before you sit here and debate all the corrections and things that need to be changed, if that's how council wants, because there is a lot of stuff here that's just not right, and I don't think this is the right meeting to do this, and this should be, or we should have a workshop or we're tweaking, fine-tuning things, that this is what we're going to do. I'm not saying I'm voting either way, I just feel that it has a lot of things that don't feel right for me. I'm worried about the businesses in the downtown area. We always talk about tourism. Is there going to be a buffer zone? I believe Eugene and Ben have a buffer zone. The Trinity Church is, I know where it's at, I actually asked a question because I know where it's at. It's in the far east side of town, away from the downtown area, so, you know, it's not located near the touristy area where people like to spend time in Bend. I haven't seen the ones in Ashland, so I can't speak for them. So I'm a little bit worried about where are these locations? I'm worried about how neighbors feel about it, how that relates to if your neighbors don't want it of the business next door, how that affects them. I just don't think we really thought that piece out yet, how it's going to affect somebody else's business. So that's a thing we think we should spend time talking about. Who else is in here? I'm going to throw Summer out because she works on track, and I was texting her up here, and I'm like asking about Medicaid, so I was like, hey, Summer, I believe there's restrictions on Medicaid being used for this. I don't think that's a viable thing, so I just happened to have Summer's cell phone, so I was texting her, asked her some questions. I asked her about, you know, I'm going to throw you out there again, would you take some of these people? I guess they'll be very limited on certain cases. So I just don't think this is, we could spend here hours debating what needs to be corrected. I think this is more of a workshop thing that needs to be set down and say, hey, or this council goes, hey, I don't like the yurts, this and that, and we all come together, if this is something people want to do. At this point, I just don't think, I'm a yes, because there's so much that needs to be edited in this thing. I just don't think it's ready for today's vote. So I don't want to spend two hours here debating what needs to be changed and what needs to be not changed, but I could see some merit, and I could see some not people wanting it, so I think that's why I'm where I'm at today.
Brian.
First of all, can we have quiet in the back, please? Back of the room? Can you guys be quiet, please? Thank you. So we've had several meetings, business meetings, where we have made many modifications to things on the fly, and we've gotten through it that night. This is definitely one of those situations, and I wish Councilor Yonker would have told us what his concerns are so we can start working through them, because I'm ready to do that, and I'm going to start right now. I agree that Medicaid or Medicare should not be a factor in this. It's a huge assumption that it could be involved, and honestly, it just creates complications and a barrier to a program that is largely a goodwill program, that nobody is really wanting Medicare to be a part of it anyway. This has been addressed a little bit, but some of the benefits to enacting a program as opposed to not having a program is that the city and the police department will be aware of the locations of these sites. The neighbors will be noticed, if not have approval, depending on where council goes. There will be basic rules and regulations that have to be followed, and there is, you know, by approving it, there is explicit allowance by the city, so it, in a way, promotes the use of the program, whereas when you don't have a program, that doesn't happen. So as far as the language itself, I would like added that this program is not allowed in the central business district, and I think we probably would all agree on that. I would like all sites to apply with the city, not just the sites that are over three, because I would like staff and the police department to have a list or a database of all locations that this is happening. I don't think that's a huge ask. I am open to the adjacent property approval idea that has been floated. I'm kind of on the fence on that, but if council feels like that's something we need to do, I could probably go along with that. And then this is, this is more of a question or an idea, but just to keep council apprised of how the program is rolling out, maybe having some sort of small addition to the monthly report that we would, you know, see how many sites have joined on that month, or how many total sites there are, some sort of ongoing reporting, even if it's quarterly, just so council is apprised of how the program is progressing. Other than that, I think most of the language looks pretty good.
Next. I don't know, oh, yeah, I wrote it down. Valerie?
Yeah, you. Just waiting for you to say my name. Okay, well, I like this program, but I do have to say, there's a lot of things that I think need to be honed in on. I know other communities that have this program. I think it's just basically, actually, back in 2018 or 2019, we came very close to doing this, because we knew that there was people out there living in their cars that didn't have anywhere to park. I mean, and that's obvious a problem, that is a piece of the puzzle, that there are people out there that are working people, that don't have any place to go and don't have anywhere to park, and I think that's a huge, those are the people that we're trying to help, is those people that are really there, they just need that help. So I really think this is a great program because it allows churches, like you said, to have something small they can do and wrap around people that need help. If you have, as a church, three, maybe even, you know, three, you can kind of wrap them around and help them out. I mean, churches do wonderful things. Churches used to be the means by, did everything. You didn't look to the city to do it, churches did it. I think the reason you have to have this program is for the safety of it, because I don't really want people opening up a church and not having restrooms, and not having washing stations, and not having that public health piece. I mean, that's, I think that's why other people don't want a church that's down the street from them and opening up something if they can just defecate or whatever, anywhere else. So there needs to be some safety issues, public safety issues in it, and I think that's why we have it, is so that there are some parameters. I think all churches, everybody feels better if they know the rules, and I think that's a big part of it, and I think, you know, we can go to the parks, and we know the problems that we've had at the parks, is the rules and there's not being enforced. But if you have a church or a nonprofit or something, even a business, willing to wrap their hands around, you know, with people, working people that don't have a place to stay, I think this is a great program for that. I just have a few problems. I don't really like the idea of tents and yurts and all those things. I think it should be for cars, people living in their cars, RVs, whatever. I think that's important, that's who we're trying to target with this particular program. So I think that that's important. I also believe that side businesses should be notified, and, yeah, I don't know whether we can do all that tonight or not, but I like the program, and I would like to see something set up to move forward with it.
Rob, then Rick, then Vanessa.
Yeah, I agree with most of what Valerie just said, and, you know, just with regards to, you know, some things I think that I would want to see changed in this, I would definitely want an exclusion of the central business district. I also am not in favor of tents or yurts or any other structures. I think when we first decided to put this kind of on our agenda, I think it was kind of in response to, or immediately, or very close to the same timeframe, as we prohibited the non-resident parking on East Park Street. But the question was, well, where do we send cars that want to spend time overnight? And I think that was kind of the genesis of kind of ending up here tonight. So to me, this was always to be about cars and car campers and families that have to live in their cars, or people that work and don't have, and drive to work, but they don't have a place to live. So for me, the structures would be out. Again, central business district, I think, needs to be out, and the main reason there is that we are encouraging events, we try to encourage window shopping, we try to encourage sidewalk dining, we try to encourage all those outdoor activities that I think are not necessarily furthered by homeless campers in their, in the parking lots. But as far as, you know, notice versus approval, right now, if I heard correctly, and I think I asked the question a couple of times, there's nothing illegal right now about what Edgewater did. They didn't have to get their neighbors' approval, and right now, anybody could do this without their neighbors' approval. So I'm actually okay with mandating that they, that a participant were to give notice to their neighbor, but I think we'd be taking away people's property rights if we forced them to get the approval, because they don't have to now. They could do this without approval now. So I'm not, I'm not interested in forcing approval, but noticing, I think, is reasonable. You know, I think it's, I really appreciated what Mike said about something small that a small church, or a small group, or a small business owner could do, a bite-sized piece, a way to get involved, and a way to be part of the solution, rather than doing nothing, which makes us part of the problem, or it makes everyone in the city part of the problem if they don't do anything. But this is a really, I think, a way that people can be proactive, feel like they're involved, and actually be involved, and actually improve our homeless situation. If we can put that, most of my concerns into verbiage tonight, I'd be willing to vote yes tonight, but that's where I am.
Rick.
I agree with Councilor Pell that we should eliminate the tents and not be in the CPD, but I would also like to see for consideration for staff time that's involved, there be some sort of minimal fee involved, especially with the larger applications. And if it is a large application, I would like to possibly put in there the consideration of notifying the neighbors as well. Thank you.
Vanessa.
For clarification, I do believe there's language right now that exists that neighbors would be notified. Is that correct?
So that's only for the transitional housing portion, not for the overnight?
Understood. Six, okay, six vehicles, okay. Yeah, I'm in agreement with most of the council on this, that not to allow it in the central business district. I don't believe that adjacent property owners should be required to approve. I'm willing to meet in the middle on the elimination of tents or yurts. I know other communities have language that allows that. I believe that's where that came from, was the city of Bend. And I would like to see the violation for this. I do agree with Chief Hensman, I would like to see the violation be a Class E, $50 violation, and although that's not currently outlined. So with that, I think everyone has had a moment to speak. I would like to make a motion. I move to adopt the- Municipal Code with the amendment of prohibiting host sites within the central business district, eliminating the usage of tents or yurts, essentially eliminating any structure other than a motor vehicle, adding that it is a Class E violation for $50. I don't know if I've missed anyone else's concerns.
How about notification of neighbors?
Notifying, yes, thank you. Notifying all neighbors under both program types and also notifying the city for both program types for all sites. And have it read by title only.
Is that a second from Vanessa, from Valerie? Okay. Discussion on the motion. Valerie, go ahead.
Yeah, I, the one thing that I want to make sure, and I do know when we talked about Bend before, Bend has the vetting process. I want to make sure that the process is set up as we set it up. So it sounds like the city has the application or it goes through the city. And then the vetting, how does that happen? I mean, is that happening? That's what I'm just kind of curious about. I don't know if that's been set up or going to be set up separately.
So the way that it's set up is that suppose, this is meant to give businesses or nonprofits, whoever wants to participate in this program, the latitude to set their own parameters. They're required to set policies for the rules there, you know, who they're going to take. There are limitations on who they can take, obviously, in terms of numbers, but it's going to be up to the participating entity to come up with the parameters. So that's.
That's how it's set up. And I will say, and I know those of you out there haven't seen it, but the ground rules and procedures for overnight parking, this was one of the churches that had their parameter set up, and they are very clear. I will be considerate of fellow overnight. I mean, there's a lot of things in here. Dogs must be on a leash. I mean, they have rules. They have rules. And so I think any organization that takes this on will want to make sure that they have rules that they will expect them to abide by. So I'm just making sure that that is something that they will have the opportunity to do.
So I'm just doing a quick look over this again, and that actually looks like it's only for the transitional overnight parking as well. So if that's something, I mean, set the parameters and we'll get it done. How you want, whether you want it to basically, whether you want the two, the transitional overnight to mirror basically the overnight camping in terms of notice and having parameters, setting, having the entity set policies, we can, we can do that. That's not a problem. Just set the parameters and we'll, we'll make it happen.
I think based on the motions, that may be the intent of the, of that, was that we, we do not differentiate between the two and we follow the, the transitional as the lead.
All right.
Uh-oh.
Drop the mic.
Joel, Joel, then Brian.
So in terms of discussion, I'd like to see a workshop on it to thoroughly vet it and go through it. I had a question. So let's say UCAN buys the DMV building and they, they convert it into one of these facilities. They charge Medicaid for their residences that are there. Does this city provision allow them not to do that and have that patient pay those fees?
Well, remember, paying fees to stay at a location like this would implicate landlord-tenant law, and that's, I think, the rationale behind not having them pay.
What was that, what was that again?
So if you, if, under a program like this, an, an entity wanted for people who are going to use their facilities to park overnight, charge them a fee to stay and they stayed for long enough, you'd be bringing in landlord-tenant law. And then you, they'd be opening themselves up to having a long, drawn-out way to have to, how to, have to get people off their property if they want, don't want them anymore.
So hotels don't have that issue?
Council won't have that issue, but this is, I think, the ordinance itself is setting the parameters, like just the overall 10,000-foot, you know, high kind of bird's eye view of how the city wants it to look, and then it's up to the entities to, to work within those parameters.
Well, I think it's an overreach in terms of regulation because it's going to pay the operational cost for UCAN. And they're going to do it regardless of what the city ordinance says unless this, you know, unless the city ordinance, unless somebody has some ill, ill will or whatever. And it can also be the operational cost for, for a church or other places as well. So I don't know why we wouldn't just remain silent on the issue. And to have, there's nothing wrong with accepting Medicaid payments to provide a service for the underserved. That's what, that's the purpose of that. So it baffles me.
Let's see, I have Brian, then Dwayne, then I think Rick. Did you have a hand too? Okay.
I just want to say that I think that the approval of this program over the time that I've been on council is probably going to show the biggest benefit to the situation in the parks of anything we've done so far, probably even more than the ordinances we're going to be talking about here in a couple of weeks. I think that this has the potential to be a huge benefit to the park situation and to the streets around town that have vehicles. So I think this is a great program. The one piece of that motion I wasn't totally happy with was the removal of any non-vehicle camping site, because I think, including at least a minimal amount of those, even if it's just one non-vehicle site per host, would help the parks even more and it would help the downtown more and it would help everywhere where there's non-vehicle homeless camping occurring. So I'm not a huge fan of the non-vehicle portion, but I do think, even if we just allowed one non-vehicle site or per host, I think that that would make this an even greater tool for the community. So I just wanted to say that before we voted, but even if that's not amended, I'll likely vote yes. Thank you.
Dwayne.
Well, I would encourage, I know Path's big on this and I'm assuming you have churches lined up right this minute for this, but if they want to do it, I hope they go ahead and do it, that that's what they want to do. I'm going to be a no because I'm not ready to pass this yet, but I think there is some value in some of this, because I do know a couple employers that have people live in their car that are not using drugs, so I think that would be a benefit. But I just don't see churches lining up today. And you said there's one, I just don't know what that one is yet. He didn't tell us which one it was. So, and if that's what they want to do, I don't understand why they haven't done it already. I mean, there's no rule that says they can't. Edgewater did this for three and a half years and they decided to stop the program because of their concerns and issues, so I don't know if they're going to pick it back up. I'm not asking them. I know, you know, texting Summer, she said she's done a couple of this before for On Track. No, you haven't done this before. One, you did one.
All right. Hang on, hang on. We're not having a discussion with the audience.
But I would say, hey, there's no rule that says you can't do this right this minute. So I just leave it at that. There's no rule that says, hey, I want to let this car park in my parking lot overnight. So why isn't businesses or churches or whatever doing it if that's what their goal is? So that's my concern is, why isn't it happening already? And if the groups are not already reaching out to them, I encourage them to reach out to them and see what happens. I mean, they have that, this ordinance doesn't need to pass for that to happen today. So that's just where I'm at.
Rick.
Since this is a moment of discussion, I guess I'd like to hear from other councilors if there's any consideration for a $10 or $25 application fee to help compensate at least for some staff time. So that's a question.
Brian.
I would think that such a nominal fee would be insignificant in the amount, in the amount that it affects our budget, so I don't know that we need to worry about it.
All right. Rob.
Yeah. I agree with some of what Brian said, maybe not to the same degree, where he thinks it's going to be a huge benefit, but I would agree that it's likely to be a benefit. And I would also say that it's at virtually no cost to the city. You know, where, where do we ever get an opportunity to vote on something that's going to be a benefit? Will cost the city almost nothing. To me, it's, it's pretty simple. You know, it's, you know, there's, there's, right now, someone could legally do it, but if this helps some smaller church or some small property owner have enough confidence that the, you know, there's a program that they can get involved with and do it, if that helps them and it helps to tip the scales, help them make the decision to do that, I'm all for it. Let's help some small groups and small churches do something that could be significant that costs the city virtually nothing. Where's the harm in that?
Vanessa, then Joel.
I did just want to say thank you, Ruth, for all of your research, and thank you, Path, also, for all of your research into this, and thank you for coming to this discussion a little bit more prepared than some of the council. So thank you.
Joel.
So I'm going to vote no, and it's not that I don't support the program. I just don't want to over-regulate it. And we're dealing in a subject matter that none of us up here have done before, and we have, we know nothing about the Medicaid and the fees. We know, and it doesn't mean that the program can't occur, Julie. It can't occur tomorrow. In fact, should. And the community just has to step forward and do it. And if we have a, a program, you know, I have no objection to the program, except I don't want to over-regulate it. Why should we have codes that, if you can do it now, that over-regulate it? I don't understand that. So, so I'm going to be voting no for it.
All right. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance with four amendments. One would be that this not be allowed in the central business district. One would be no tents or yurts. One is a Class E violation, which I think is actually already in it under enforcement, item C. And then also that we would notify the neighbors and city for all types and not just the transitional housing program. Is there any further discussion? Brian?
I'm sorry, I just wanted a clarification. Did we, is there an amendment to having all sites apply, or was that not a part of the motion? Okay, that is a part of the motion? All right, thank you.
Having all sites apply?
Notify the city.
Oh, yeah. Notify the neighbors and the city in all types. Is it notify and apply? Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, Vanessa, you made the motion. How do you vote?
Yes.
And Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
No.
Motion passes five to two. Any further discussion on this? Okay. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Grants Pass adding Title 13 Safe Parking Programs to the Grants Pass Municipal Code as amended. All right, and that one was not unanimous, so it will come back up for a second vote at a future meeting. Next up on our agenda would be to consider a resolution that would authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the On Track for Temporary Housing and Substance Abuse Services. Augustus is presenting.
So I have a presentation to you for, for the grant agreement with On Track. So just a little bit of background, the January 9th workshop, council heard a request for funds from On Track for emergency lodging associated with treatment for substance abuse disorders and the establishment of navigation center. So their emergency lodging services are going to provide safe lodging for individuals who are residents of Josephine County and want treatment for substance abuse or unsafely or precariously housed, are on a waitlist for residential treatment or detox services, can safely reside in a single occupancy unit without 24-hour supervision, and aren't deemed to be a high risk of violence to themselves or others. So in furtherance of this, council provide direction to staff to draft a grant agreement in the amount of $890,000 using Department of Administrative Services funds to support On Track's new property development, which will support 10 to 15 beds for these substance abuse treatment services. So the agreement's been reviewed and approved and signed by On Track and is ready for the city manager's signature. So the lodging services are intended to consist of the following: pre-treatment, emergency lodging, services and support. Lodging will be approved or denied every 72 hours. Lodging rules, it'll be low-barrier service, and the emergency lodging will be provided at no cost to the individual. So kind of just moving through the big picture of the agreement, the execution, the grant period is execution through December 31st, 2025, for a total of $890,000. The limitation on the use of these funds are for services enumerated in the Department of Administrative Services Agreement. And just as a reminder, that's for programs that support individuals who are experiencing homelessness or for the provision of temporary or affordable housing. The timeline for dispersment, so we have dispersment set up in two different ways. The first way is as a reimbursement. So On Track would send a reimbursement request and then the city would pay them out of the funds. Or we do it as, do it as an advance. So because On, On Track's doing a lot of construction and renovating, they're not able to pay for the services upfront, so that's why they would be asking for an advance. In order to get that advance, they'd have to show us the, the costs, like the written bids, estimates and quotes from their contractors. And in all cases, dispersment would be 20 days within the receipt of the reimbursement request or those written bids, quotes and estimates. So as part of this agreement, On Track is going to be responsible for record retention and maintaining, maintaining records for us to be able to audit at any time. So they're going to have to keep records for six years relating to this grant agreement and all the services they've delivered. In addition, there should be in your packet a reporting form that they're going to have to support, to submit quarterly within 45 days of the preceding quarter to show what they're, what they're spending the money on and how much is left. The termination default, so there's a termination for convenience with 30 days' notice to the other party. That's mutual, so either party can terminate the agreement. And then there's a default for material breach or termination for cause. And then the boilerplate provisions, which are largely the same in these grant agreements. So your call to actions tonight and call to action is at your discretion, and we have three potential motions for you. And with that, I turn it over.
Thank you, Augustus. Are there any questions? Brian?
Yeah, thank you, Augustus. On section four of the contract, it talks about the timeline regarding dissemination of funds, and it says in there, the city will disseminate funds for all eligible DAS expenditures. And I didn't see that there was anything in the contract about, when we had this discussion, there was one of the, basically the metric we were talking about was they were adding a number of beds, you know, 10 to 15 beds or eight to 15 beds. And there's nothing in the contract talking about number of beds. It basically is just saying, the city will disseminate funds for all eligible DAS expenditures, which potentially could read that they could, if they wanted to roll these funds into one of their existing programs, then we would have no recourse. Is that accurate?
I don't think that that's accurate. So at the beginning of the contract where it lists out all the reasons why we're entering into this contract, forth, forthwhereas down, grantee seeks to provide the updated space to provide, that this is wrong, this needs, this is a outdated version of the agreement, to provide substance abuse, treatment for individuals with substance abuse disorders for homeless and housing burdened individuals, including the creation of 10 to 15 beds for that purpose. So it is enumerated at the beginning of the agreement that that's enumerated, it's going to be for that purpose, 10 to 15 beds.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Other questions? All right, I guess there's no further questions. Is there anyone from the public who wanted to speak on this issue? No? Okay, we'll close public comment and turn it to council for discussion. Go ahead, Dwayne.
Well, I'm obviously going to approve this because I started helping summer last November, so, um, and I've been really advocating about getting drug treatment for this, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the grant agreement.
Seconded by Valerie. Discussion on the motion? All right. Well, the motion was to approve the resolution, and Dwayne, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. That was a quick one. Next item on the agenda is to consider a resolution regarding a system development charge.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, again. You haven't seen one of these for a while. City offers system development charge grants for businesses who are looking to expand in some way. The applicant here is Celeste Wilson. She purchased the building that is located at 181 Northwest, Northwest Benella Avenue. This is just a few blocks north of here, off of Midland and Washington. And the building has been there for quite some time. She acquired the structure a couple of years ago and converted it from an office building into a eight-unit, essentially apartment complex. So, the request tonight is coming from her. She unfortunately had a last-minute thing and wasn't able to come, so she's not here with us tonight. The request is relating to your council goals to encourage economic opportunities and facilitate sustainable and manageable growth. As I mentioned, Celeste remodeled an underutilized, an underutilized commercial space that houses eight seniors. The purpose of this grant program is to give funding for expanding owner-occupied companies faced with SDC expenses. The program allows you to cover up to 50% of the total cost of the SDCs, not to exceed $25,000. There's a few pictures there. The work that has been done to date is primarily for fire suppression. The building code requires in this situation that a building has fire suppression in it. This one was constructed without it, so she had to bring in the main and then also install fire suppression into there. And so, that, that involved a new water connection, which triggered some new SDCs. So, we do have funds in our LB 6381. The total reimbursement for this would be $3,295, leaving a balance of about $180,000. So, this is fully at council's discretion. Under the rules that, how the SDC grant program was set up, it doesn't set a threshold for when council reviews these, so that's why you, you see all SDC grant requests. We reviewed the application. It does meet the standards that are in the guidance for SDC grants, and there's a recommended motion for you at the bottom.
Thank you, Brad. Council, do you have any questions?
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone here who wanted to speak on this issue?
Hello, Mike Slodemakers, President of Grants Pass. Just as a point of data, I can firsthand speak to my wife, and I stayed at this facility a year ago for a week as an Airbnb, so I'm just going to throw it out there. That was what we did a year ago at that exact location with that exact person. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll turn it over to you, council. Dwayne?
I just want to say that I'm really for this, and I know there's another group getting ready to build, do some more housing for seniors that are low-income, and I really feel this is something we really need to focus on, is these group of people. This is the one that's, I feel, the most hurting in our city here. So, I want to go ahead and move to, can't even see. Sorry, I'm running with glasses now, so. I moved to approve the resolution, warning Celeste Wilson for the Bernal Apartments for Matching System Development Charge Grant for property located at 181 Northwest Benella Avenue.
Seconded by all kinds of people. I'll give it to Rick. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Dwayne, you made the motion to approve the resolution. How do you vote?
Of course, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up, we're going to talk about investment strategies.
Brad and I both have four presentations tonight, so we're battling out on who can keep everything the shortest, I think. Okay, so if some of you remember, last year I brought a similar presentation forward to council. We do have a new counselor. Political climates always change, which is why I'm bringing this back to you as part of this annual kind of update, just to make sure we're on the right path. So, we're looking at the subject of summary of the continued council direction. So, last time, we talked about local considerations for certificates of deposits or CDs in local banks, and then also corporate considerations to remove certain entities as investment opportunities that don't align with the council values or goals. So, as a little bit of background, on September 21st, 2022, council gave direction to the investment officer, which is me, per the policy, to keep a minimum of $3 million in local banks in the form of CDs and to allow for all eligible corporate investments per ORS and policy. Our investment policy for CDs is a 10% maximum of the total portfolio and 5% per issuer. And as deemed last time, there was a potential local connection to community partnerships through these CD investments. The investment policy also allows for corporate bonds and commercial paper with a 35% maximum holdings of the total portfolio and 5% maximum per issuer. So, some entities have disallowed certain corporate bonds opportunities, even though allowed by policy or ORS, because the values of these companies don't align with their governing bodies' values and goals. And there is a slew and splattering of what reasons they choose, but this is why I'm bringing it up to you. This is an example from the city of Portland. I'm just going to read a part of this in their, their investment policy. Corporate securities issuers must meet the policy guidelines set forth in Appendix A. From time to time, city council may remove a specific industry classification from Appendix A, at which point investment officers are not permitted to purchase securities within the industry classification that have been removed. Any existing positions of the removed industry classifications need not be sold. Industry classifications are categorized and determined using the Bloomberg, Bloomberg Industry Classification Standard, BICS. It further goes on in their Appendix A to talk about which kind of business industries they will not invest in. So, you can see crude oils up there, small firearms or small arms, alcoholic beverages, casinos and gaming, correctional facilities, and security services. Now, I will kind of warn you against some of the anecdotes that I've talked to our own investment advisor about. In specific wartime, especially recently with Ukraine, some governing bodies have talked about divesting potentially in the U.S. government. Part of the reason why this is written the way it is for the city of Portland, and they're very specific to the industry, is that the U.S. government potentially is in everybody's portfolio. When you buy a U.S. Treasury, which is normally the safest thing you could buy, it offsets your more risky portfolio options. So, I just want to warn you that potentially, if you divest in a specific company, you could have a daisy chain effect of other companies that we wouldn't be able to div, uh, invest in. So, the cost implication, with CDs, you may be foregoing more profitable investment opportunities. With your corporate bonds, we may be foregoing more profitable investments, and you may inherently be removing more than one due to association, just by the reason that I just gave earlier. So, I have two call to actions here, and they're at, they're at your discretion, and they are continual reevaluation that will be coming up here probably annually at the very minimum. And you have some of those alternatives there, where we can keep the $3 million, we can increase it, or we can decrease as far as CDs in local banks. I'll take questions, I guess, on the CDs first, and then we can move to the corporate side here in a little bit.
Questions? Rick?
Thank you, J.C. Are we in the fortunate position, some of the CDs are now at 5%?
Just recently, we rolled a five-month CD to about 4.88%.
Thank you. Super.
Brian?
Thanks, J.C. From a purely financial perspective, would you recommend, or would it, maybe would not, would you say that moving the money out of CDs and into other investments would be more financially beneficial for the city?
There is that possibility. I will say, having a minimum requirement for, of $3 million, I could always do CDs even if there wasn't a minimum requirement by your guys' direction. So, yes and no. The banks will change their rates based on what they have available as well.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, is that $3 million better invested somewhere else?
It has a potential opportunity. But again, this last time, it definitely had an opportunity for it to stay in a CD versus invested somewhere else.
Okay, thanks.
Joel?
What are the terms of the CD? How long?
Uh, it was only five months.
Five months, so, so then, as the interest rate goes up, every five months, we get to cash in on the higher interest rate if interest rates are going up?
If they're going up, but if they're going down, we're also in the other position.
Sure, sure. And they're going up. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Brian?
Yeah. Historically, have our non-CD investments had better returns than the CDs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
So, is there a potential motion off of this to either stay the same?
We still have to have public discussion and all that.
Okay. Do you want me to do the other call to action before, and I can flip back and forth when we get to that point?
Sure.
Okay. So, the next would be corporate bonds and commercial paper. So, again, you could keep the full list of allowed by investment policy in Oregon revised statute, which is Exhibit A. We can remove certain corporate and commercial options that don't align with council values. There is a third option that our investment advisor also gave to us for further discussion via workshop, if you truly have some specifics as far as corporations that you want to rule out, that they could help guide us in the language in which that policy could look like. So, I'll take questions on that as well.
Questions? Rick?
So, while we're looking at this tonight, are you up against the deadline with that amount to make a reinvestment?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Joel?
Could you further explain what further discussion via workshop, recommended input from the city's investment advisor, government portfolio advisors? What kind of input are you talking about?
Yeah, so that is our investment advisor, and they have told me that if the discussion gets super complicated, that they can come in and be an expert to walk us through that process and what the policy may need to look like, just so they don't, we don't exclude things we don't intend to exclude.
Any other questions? Joel?
So, in terms of a balanced portfolio, you always balance risk by having some CDs, some stocks, mutual funds, so forth and so on. What is our balance now? And, and what, what does the advisor recommend in terms of keeping that balance?
So, as currently, the, the current direction, we were to keep about $3 million in CDs, and so that's what we have. Now, obviously, if we don't have that direction, or the direction is to go ahead and invest how you want, that changes some of the advice that the advisors would give us.
So, how much do you have outside of CDs?
Outside of CDs, just in investments, it's about $59 million. In, in all things, we have about 40-some-odd million in the LGIP, and then in our just normal checking accounts, it's about between $5 to $7 million.
So, we're pretty balanced toward, or not balanced is not the right word, but we're pretty heavy towards the, the non-CD already.
Very much so. Uh, as far as the policy, we're looking always at liquidity, risk, and return. We want to stay liquid enough so the city can meet its obligations. We want to stay as non-risky as possible so we do not have an issue, but we also want to maximize those returns as much as possible.
Brian?
Do you, is, do you see a reason for council to mandate that we have a $3 million minimum, or would it be better just to leave it to the discretion of the finance director and the investment advisor?
I think that's a question more directed towards the DAS. Do you find that there's a socioeconomic impact in partnership with those local banks if I keep that money there?
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, J.C. Is there anybody from the public who wanted to speak on this issue? All right, we have somebody coming forward. I know she'll remember to state her name and let us know where she lives.
Rika Brown, Grants Pass. I like local banks. I just refinanced my house with a local bank, First Community. And, uh, I mean, I, I read this, you know, at least part of that presentation in the, in the packet. I didn't see anything about risk. I was hearing about higher returns for other investments than CDs, but nothing about risk there. And I think we probably already have a good balance, but we ought to keep some of that in nice, safe CDs in our local banks. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this? All right, we'll close public comment and turn it over to you, council. Joel?
I don't want to cut off comment, but I was going to go ahead and make a motion that I, I move to keep $3 million in CDs in the local banks.
Seconded by Valerie. Discussion on that? Brian?
Well, we're investing money here, and this seems like an arbitrary mandate, just to keep $3 million in local banks. And honestly, Washington Federal isn't even a local bank, they have 200 locations, so, you know, Amquabank is, I think, based out of Portland, and they're more regional. So, personally, I would rather just leave it to our financial advisors, the experts who know what they're doing, as opposed to having an arbitrary $3 million CD mandate. So, I'll be voting no.
Further discussion? All right, Joel made the motion to keep $3 million invested in CDs in local banks. And how do you?
Oh, yes.
How do you vote? Okay. Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rick? Uh, excuse me, Rob?
No.
All right. Motion passes five to two. All right.
We, we still need the, the one that's on the screen. Karen, can you pull that? We still need a motion on this one.
Okay. Discussion on the second issue? Valerie?
Well, I don't want to cut up the motion, but I also don't want to get into the, going down the list and go through that and open ourselves up to maybe make something that offsets something else. I would like to stay and just move to keep the full list as allowed by the investment policy and Oregon revised statutes.
Seconded by Vanessa. Discussion on that? Discussion on that? All right. So the motion was to keep the full list as allowed by the Investment Policy and Oregon Revised Statutes. And Valerie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Is there somebody on my ear? Sounds a lot like me, too. How about time for public comment? This is an opportunity for the public to address the city council on items not related to a public hearing or council action item before the council tonight. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address the council as one body, not two individuals. At the conclusion of public comment, council will have an opportunity to respond. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats, or other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office, or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office in an attempt to resolve the matter.
And do we have somebody available online? Okay. To the person online, go ahead and state your name and let us know whether or not you live in the city.
Good evening. I need to press the...
Hang on, we're waiting for somebody who's online.
Is somebody online?
Mayor, he needs to press... Mike, you need to press star six on your phone so you can be heard.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi. My name is Mike Kelfrey, and I'm a Grants Pass city resident. And my public comment is in regards to the mayor's Pride Month proclamation. You know, basically, what I've got is a proclamation rebuttal. So whereas all humans are born, a man or a woman, and whereas God created Adam and Eve, not Adam and Steve, and whereas the nation was founded by real men and real women with infinite dignity and value, and whereas LGBTQ+ agenda has had a measurable negative impact on many companies within our country, see Anheuser-Busch and Target for glowing examples of the LGBTQ+ woke marketing. And whereas I do not have anything against someone else's sexual preferences or lifestyle choices, I do, however, want all children protected from those with twisted ideologies. And whereas the city of Grants Pass is committed to distracting from the real issues at hand due to its ginormous failures within the vagrant homeless population, and of course, our city parks, and whereas celebrating pride for an entire month is completely inappropriate, and most citizens are sick and tired of this nonsense being shoved down our throats from all directions. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Kelfrey, taxpaying citizen of Grants Pass, hereby proclaim the month of June as "Give us our damn parks back month," and in support of all naturally formed men and women in our community. Thank you, and have a great evening.
All right. I have a number of blue sheets, Bill, who are going to go before you. Is Brenda Sizin still here? Sandy Rourke?
My name is Sandy Rourke. I'm a resident of Grants Pass. One of the things I want to talk about...
Can you hear me? Can you make sure the mic is on? Can you hear me? Hear me now? Okay.
See, one of the things I want to talk about is I know that the people, the vagrants in the park are allowed to brandish weapons. Unfortunately, that is keeping us from being able to go to our parks now. Just a couple of days ago, a lady was trying to walk her newborn baby with a stroller in Tussin Park, went over to the walk trail, or to the walk bridge. As she's walking onto the bridge, she noticed a man with a ski mask flipping knives around again. So she turned around and went back home. There was another lady who tried to walk Tussin Park also, and there was a man who was on a skateboard taking pictures of her as, sorry, as he went by. And he also has, and his vest had long arrows, like from a bow and arrow, like brandishing them. There were, what was it? There was one guy who was literally, an Oronian, was literally chased out of the park by another person throwing wood at him, pieces of wood, and he wasn't able to go into Tussin Park. And there was another time I went to Tussin Park on a Sunday, and I noticed, after speaking to him, my aunt asked me if this was the man I was speaking to, come to find out, he was the man who held up a grocery store, or a little convenience store. And when the other Oronians tried to stop him, he pulled out a knife, not allowing him to stab people. This is a guy I just spoke to face-to-face with, and I didn't know he is the guy who threatened to stab people. That just terrified me. But you're saying, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, but it's okay for them to brandish weapons, but their weapons are now not allowing us to be in our parks? That just seems not right. Another one about the, if you guys did build a building, a million-dollar building, it's, I have questions of why this building, what house, 106 or 2 homeless people, the last number we received was 602 people, homeless people in Grants Pass, how would this million-dollar building be different than the buildings we have now? The buildings are not being used now, like the homeless, like the homeless shelter usually is halfway filled, because people don't want to follow the laws. They don't want to not do drugs. They want to do the things they want to do. So how would a million-dollar building help us without just like losing a million dollars? There was another one. Oh, and about the building also, I met a lady in Tussin Park who was a vagrant, and was kicked out of every single one of the places. And she was literally being bounced to park to park to park, because she refuses to follow the laws. It's just another proof that if we do build this building, they're not going to follow it. And how's... Oh, also, I want to bring up too, they, please stop beating people in the park. Please stop giving them needles inside the park, because we are finding it everywhere. It's ridiculous. Sizin's, oh, and porta-potties. I just found out that you guys are responsible for the porta-potties, where they go and where they at. And I don't understand why in Tussin Park, there's only one porta-potty. Why is there none of the porta-potties clues? There's vagrants who admitted to me they have nowhere else to go besides where they're standing, right in the park. It is disgusting.
Richard has gone now. David, you're still here. Go ahead.
I want to second some of that Tussin Park. Tussin Park was county property that at some point became a city park for the sole reason of being a southern entrance to Reinhardt All Sports Park. Well, you can't use that walking bridge anymore for the, just noted, I mean, that was just the other day, the police were called out, and it was someone that had already been trespassed. People are scared to take their kids across there because they say, they're out there saying nasty things to their wives and stuff. If we're going to pick where people can camp and cannot camp, let's open that bridge up to the neighborhood that it's supposed to serve so we can use it and go to Reinhardt Park and watch the ducks anymore. Disabled people aren't scared to take their spouse across the bridge. They got turned away, a man with this woman in a wheelchair, they got turned away by Let's make that a non-camping area, too. It's been a mess out there. Chief Hensman can tell you what happened in that place during boat nick. It was just, Counselor Yonker saw it. It was foul. Let's make some areas where we can enjoy ourselves, too, in camping. The Little League parks at Morrison Park, don't you think kids should be able to play baseball without tripping over junkies passed out in the park? Come on, let's give us some more areas where we can enjoy ourselves and enjoy our tax dollars that are spent. Because if we can't enjoy our parks, I don't want my property taxes going to pay for them. Let the junkies pay for them and mow the lawns. The Tussin Park, the grass is dead now. You go look at it. It's yellow, dying, because they can't water it, can't take care of it. The junkies break the sprinklers when they try and run them. Either give us our money back or give us our parks back. I think a lot of us have had enough, and the little bit you are talking about giving us isn't enough. Give us our money or give us our parks. Thank you.
Mike?
Good evening again. My name is Mike Slotemaker. I'm a resident here in Grants Pass. Mid-February was one of two times in my entire life I've been overwhelmed. And part of it was the problem we had with transients on our property coming from Baker Park. I've said this several times. Many of the leadership staff that are here came over and helped. And here's the thing, is you didn't tell me anything I couldn't have done on my own, but I needed someone to show me the way. I think that's what's going on earlier when we were talking about these safe places. It's not that people can't do it, we don't know how. And that's what it's going to do. So the reason I'm here tonight is I want to show a few pictures. I got a lot of feedback last time, because people online saw it. This is what drove me to be overwhelmed. That's my house in the background. This is a guy walking by with a machete. Okay? And that's part of what the leadership team here showed me was, get a hold of the police, let them know when somebody's being there, they can help get them off the property. That process took months. Okay? And then the comment was made, what's all this garbage going to do for the wildlife and the environment? I've never been an Enviro guy, but that comment hit home. And even on Earth Day, I was down there cleaning it up. And the leadership here, as I was going through that process, continued to provide feedback. I drug a lot of garbage out of the property line. We'll see if we can get you a dumpster. Let me get you in touch with Thelma. Solutions, solutions. And I know it's a small thing, but as we cleaned up the property, here's a makeshift club. Right? That's my son holding a makeshift club. Weekend later, it's a makeshift spear. We're finding this within 100 feet of our house. It's gone now. But the reason I say this is I've seen the, I don't know if it's the rumors or the truth, this council's looking to say, why don't we get 30 more dollars per customer for water and 30 more for sewer? That works out to about $700 more a year to a homeowner. And I will gladly pay that, and I will gladly stand up and support it, because what we're dealing with out there is a public safety problem. I have interacted with the police department over a dozen times since mid-February. And every time, I get a little survey that comes to my phone that says, how did they do? And there's a question on there that says, how safe do you feel in Grants Pass? And there's several options there, all the way from, it's awesome and I feel safe, to, you know, there's some dude like breathing on my neck right now. But every time, I've had to put, not safe. I do not feel safe here, but I know it's being worked on, and I know it takes money. And so that $700 a year, to be able to put, I do feel safe, I will gladly spend that. Thank you.
Bill?
In my 30 years here, Del Aldrich, City of Grants Pass, for the last 30 years. In my 30 years here, I've been never attending a city council meeting, never attended a Josephine County meeting, but I've attended four in a row, and I loved the dog and pony show we got last week. A lot of questions were asked that were not answered, and I know one day we'll get that answer, like what kind of tests was there done on that park and whether it was safe? I know the answer now. I found out that it is safe. But who's looking for all those bottles of pee that were everywhere, and all the crap, and all the people looking across the river from those jet boats and seeing people bathing and doing drugs openly? You said you're going to reopen that park on the west side? That's my girlfriend's, my fiance's restaurant's right in that area. We had to put locks in the bathroom because we couldn't keep the homeless out. And you're going to open it so we can't play physical golf again? Close that park down. Make it our park. You can close Reinhardt Park down, why can't you do the same with Grants Pass? Now, Tessie, it's a disaster. We were there for a short meeting. Every, the Sunday before your meeting, we show up at the park, a group of us. And we couldn't be there five minutes without all the homeless coming up, trying to take our food, and be in our meeting, and put their two cents in why we're here. We're not here to kill you out of the park, we're here to find you a place. And the idea that a low-barrier campsite is going to be a safe place is true. You guys sat there and said, got in this trouble in the first place for not having a place for the homeless to go. So one lawsuit, don't want to put another low-barrier campsite, going to pray to get sued again? Hey, you screwed up once, two wrongs do not make a right. Make this right. Find a place for people to go. Direct them to either get on a program and follow rules, or get out of town. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm here tonight, Bill Lovelace, fifth-generation Rogue Valley. I'm here tonight, first of all, to attack the editorial in tonight's paper that's attacking counselors. This body needs to attack back. They've, Mr. Stoddard has attacked Yonker. He's attacked, attacked my wife. He's basically attacking fire and police. His woke agenda. If you don't agree with the liberal bent, he's going to attack you. He's not going to print your editorial. I believe Mr. Pell and I are in the same boat there. And then his facts tonight, having been one of the biggest landlords in this city for the last 25 years, if you are a low-income person, you never pay more than 30% of your income for rent, ever, down to zero. All the subsidized units, if you raise the water rate, will be picked up by the federal government who subsidizes those units. So it's not the low-income person paying that bill, it is the federal government. Not only low-income multifamily units, but also houses that the Josephine Housing Council provides HUD vouchers for. You have the very same scenario. So the tenant won't pay that water bill. That water bill will be paid by the federal government with the subsidy. Second of all, his theory about, I can guarantee you the police chief and the fire chief can back me up, that they spend more time at my multifamily projects than they do at your single-family house. That is just a fact. Fire department rolls with the ambulance. Ambulances go to senior projects three or four times a day sometimes. So Mr. Stoddard needs to get his facts straight, because he doesn't have them straight in his editorial. I, I, I don't know how many of you read it, but I brought up the same issue in the monthly newspaper about Mr. Stoddard badmouthing Dennis Roller, who used to be a member of this council. I have the backup to prove that, the editorials back and forth, or the emails back and forth between him and me. Guys, you gotta do something. You gotta set on him. Thank you.
Hi again, Adriana. I don't, that girl was coffee, but I don't want to touch it. I don't want to touch it. She touched it, I don't touch it. Somebody that's not here, no. I live in the city of Grants Pass by Morrison's Park. The first time I spoke to you guys, it was in relation to the start of the youth baseball and softball, and the situation that Morrison's Park was in. We really were here asking for your guys' help, and we, most of us stayed back and we listened to your responses, and I learned that there's a divided council. And at that time, the majority of the council believed that the solution was to wait for the Supreme Court to hear the case. And I was pretty bummed about that, because I know that that can take years. And I know that children only get one childhood, and taking some years out of that is pretty significant for the way that they shape their future. So I just wanted to come tonight to say how excited I am that you guys are going to consider some ordinances at your next hearing. I'll be on the sound, so I'll be watching from online, but you guys have an incredibly talented city attorney. I know he's working very hard on those city ordinances. He has at least a bachelor's degree, got into law school, passed law school, got a doctorate degree of jurisprudence, passed the bar... got a doctorate degree of jurisprudence, passed the bar exam. And then his last job, he actually wrote ordinances. Yes, no, he deserves it. So I just hope you guys put a lot of trust in him. The last time I spoke to you guys, I said that you need a left wing and a right wing to make the eagle fly straight. And I just want to add that that, those wings are part of the same bird. So keep Grants Pass in mind. And I just please hope you guys come together on the 21st and pass those ordinances. So thank you.
Rika, you're going to have to move closer to the front.
Julie Hartford, Grants Pass. I did want to answer something because I think Joel, or Councilmember King might have misunderstood. He's absolutely right. There, the Seventh Day Adventist Church here in town, it's called the Grants Pass Church. They actually did have a safe parking program that they were running here. They had to stop it during COVID. I understand that their shower pan needs some repairs. And in order to bring it up to ADA standards, they need a lot more money than, than they had. And so we're actually looking into that with them right now. But part of the reason they had to stop the safe parking program is because their insurance didn't feel that they could insure it anymore. Now, I can't, I don't know, and I ask questions about the insurance portion of it. And I don't know this, but I am speculating that it wasn't technically a city-approved program and technically that kind of parking could be considered against the law. That was a problem. I'm assuming from what I heard, I don't know that to be a fact. But in addition, when we talk about the Medicaid, I think a lot of people would be unsupportive of using what that is as taxpayer dollars to do something like this. So that might be an issue. And also, Councilmember Yunker is a realtor. I used to be a realtor. And there are certain rules. When you pay for something, then like that, then you become a tenant. And then there are the certain laws that would apply to the situation and you don't want to have to go through an eviction process and that kind of thing. So there's a whole bunch of little things like that that come into play. And so I just wanted to answer those quick things for you. Because I thought you might have misunderstood my face there for a minute. Okay, I'll be there.
Rika?
Rika Brown, 1415 Southwest Bridge Street, Grants Pass. I don't usually go checking out the consent calendar. But today I did. And something caught my eye that I actually looked in the packet to read about it. The loan of $6.5 million we're applying for from the from the state. And which includes a provision that 10% of it, $650,000, would be forgiven along with the interest connected to it. If we if we raised our unit rates by a considerable amount. Subject to satisfaction by recipient of any special conditions in Exhibit C, if recipient completes the project by the project completion date deadline in accordance with the terms of this contract and provided that no event of a default has occurred, OBDD shall, 90 days after the project completion date, forgive repayment of the forgivable loan amount and any interest accrued thereon and cancel the forgivable loan. The forgivable loan amount and any interest forgiven may remain subject to the requirements of OAR 1230490050, which survive payment of the loan. Notwithstanding the preceding paragraph, if at the project completion date, the average monthly residential water rates for the water supplied by the system are not at or above the affordability rate of $48.52 per 7,500 gallons, then $650,000 of the amount due under the forgivable loan will not be forgiven. Further, the Section 2A, a loan and forgivable loan will, at OBDD's discretion and after notice recipient, be modified as follows. Interest accrues from the project completion date at the rate of 2.52% per annum. That's up from 1%, which is what we would have been paying. This, I consider a poison pill. The idea of raising our unit rates about three times what they are now is going to burn down this town. But you don't have to. We don't have to do that.
Time, Rika. Thank you. All right, I'm going to close public comment. I think everybody's spoken. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things real quick. I know you're all mostly familiar with the lawsuit, but we did have someone mention Reinhardt Park. And it is specifically excluded from the court injunction that says we have to allow unhoused people to sleep in our city parks, except for Reinhardt. So that's why there's no camping in Reinhardt. And we're not able to extend that to other parks. It's a legal agreement that we're involved in right now. Somebody mentioned feeding and needles in the park. And while some groups, outside groups have been providing either food or needles in the park, the city government is not doing that in any way. Somebody mentioned a million-dollar building. At one point, we had received a million dollars from the state for the purpose of establishing something either to help the homeless or affordable housing. That money has all been spent, including tonight. We worked on finalizing an allocation of $890,000 for the OnTrak project. So at this point, we don't have any funding available to do anything further. And that money did have specific stipulations. So it wasn't money that could be spent on anything other than homeless and affordable housing. I was going to ask the police chief, what is the policy for weapons in the parks right now? Is it okay to have weapons in our parks?
Yeah, absolutely it is.
Okay. And Augustus, is that something that we're looking at?
Yes, we're going to be clarifying that with code changes on the 21st.
Okay, thank you. So that was going to be coming up in two weeks. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is porta potties. Because the closure of Riverside Park did create a situation where people vacated Riverside Park and moved into other nearby parks. And Tussing in particular does not have a good bathroom facility. Have we done anything to add extra toilet facilities in the other parks? City manager?
We would like to have council direction if they're wanting to add additional restrooms. Currently, right now, I think from staff perspective, I've not received a request that we're requesting additional restrooms at this time.
Did I call you on Memorial Day weekend and ask you to add a porta potty in Tussing?
Yes, you asked us to look at that. And I did have staff look into that. Brad contacted them and can give you, give some additional details on the availability of that.
So Best Toilets is the company that we use to provide the two porta potties that were in Riverside. One, you know, kind of on both ends of the park. The, at the, at the time of the closure, in order to save that $1,300 or $1,400 a month that we spend, we best did come and remove those. But those certainly are there and are available if the mayor and the council direct us to, to add them into another park.
All right, anybody, oh, Rick has a quick motion.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the city council meeting after nine o'clock.
Is there a second? Dallary, all in favor of extending the meeting? Any opposed? Brian opposed. Motion passes six to one. All right, any else, anybody else want to follow up on public comment? Go ahead, Dwayne.
Well, just thinking, Mayor, for clarifying a couple of things because I was a little confused on the million-dollar building. I didn't know what it was. But now I know what you were talking about. I do have your concerns because, you know, this, this week, I took a picture of a guy riding a skateboard in Morrison with a machete. I brought those same things up. It's just a little odd to walk through a park with a machete-wielding skateboarder. It's just not something I would see that's safe. And yeah, I'm with you. That should not be happening, but it is legal to have a machete. It's legal to have a knife. It's actually legal to have a gun. So unless you're a felon, so we're not going to change some of those things. Mike brought up public safety. We had a big meeting on Monday. Actually, Bill brought it up too. Yeah, I've got chewed up on the public thing in the Courier. Because I have changed a little bit of my thing. I, I think, I've been sitting here for now five months and I've been looking at what is the number one job of the government? And I think that's to keep us safe. I've been really looking at that a lot. It's, of anything we do, what's your government doing? Keep you safe. So if we need more people to, or public safety to keep the park safe, yeah, I'm going to try to figure out a way to get that money. And if it's a fee or whatever else, I mean, I need the park safe. I want my kids safe, I want your kids safe. I don't think public safety is going out to Granny's, sleeping in her car. I talk to those guys all the time. I have Art Toffman get his phone number. I drive through the park as I'm leaving my house, using Morrison and Baker and then Tussing. I drive through them like almost daily. Morrison daily, I know that because I drive just through it. So I want the park safe. I can tell you, I've driven through the parks more times in my 40 years than the last five months I ever did in my life. I don't use the parks, honestly. I use, unless my kids go there. My kids are almost all adults now, I got one left. But they mean something to me because they mean something to everybody else. I go and walk to Tussing, I go over the walking bridge, look and say, hey, can I see the tents, whatever, what's going on? I, I see social media. It is a concern for me. I'm not going to engage on it, but I hear you all talking. I want something done, but I think I need to support public safety. And if that's a fee or whatever else, I'm willing to pay more if that's what it comes down to. And if you want to beat me up in the Courier, that's fine. Because I came here to make things safer. If that's more public safety, then that's what I'm going to go for. And to go on a good note, I'm glad that Augustus' head is really swollen tonight for your comments. He is so great and we all, thank you, Augustus.
Anybody else? Vanessa, then Brian?
I'm also in agreement that we do need more sanitation services in our parks. We, back in 2021, in the fall, we received report from park staff that there was a lot of human waste throughout the parks. And we saw a serious decrease in those instances once the porta potties were installed. So it seems like a really easy solution. And I would like the council to get on board to add some more sanitation in our parks. Not only so that the users of the parks have somewhere to use the restroom, people that come through the parks to recreate and them don't have to experience human waste outside of a restroom and also to provide that relief to our parks employees.
Brian?
Yeah, the situation at Tussing Park in particular, since Riverside was closed, is apparent to anyone that has been to the park. I don't know who up here has been in that park. I would assume a good amount of you. But just looking at it, any reasonable person would know that that park needs more than one porta potty to support what's happening in that park right now. So the fact that staff didn't take it upon themselves to fix that or bring it to council or respond to the mayor's request is unacceptable. So when we get to council comments, I hope we can resolve that. And for Rika, I appreciate you finding that in the consent calendar. I have that item starred, so we will have a discussion about that because I have questions about that exact same paragraph. So thanks.
Any more follow-up? All right, Karen, how about the emails?
So there was one email titled Riverside Park Possible Solution, or at least a big help. One titled Hire the Homeless: Cash for Trash. Two emails against the Glencrest Cottage's proposed project. Two emails in support of Share a Square Urban Campground West of Caveman Bridge. One against adding a utility fee. One supporting the levy and the utility fee and one suggesting a phasing approach for the utility fee.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. And these are items of such routine nature without controversy that they may be approved with a single action. But tonight we have two starred items. And the first one, a counselor has requested to vote on independently. So let's talk about item E. Jason's come forward. This is the loan for the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund.
It is. One, one second while I pull that up. Sorry. There was a typo on the last page. I wanted to fix it before I brought it up. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have like a four-slide presentation for you and I'll get right to the heart of your question, Counselor De La Grange. So this is regarding the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Funds as well as the Special Public Works Fund loans. As a, subject and summary, it's just an update and why the need for this resolution. It does support council's goals of effectiveness and efficiency. In September of 2022, the council did pass Resolution 227252, which authorized the city manager to apply for and if awarded, accept loan funds through Business Oregon, OBDD, in the amount of $6.5 million. We did report back to you that we were awarded funds to the city, amount of $5,050,000 from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund with up to $650,000 of that forgiven as a grant and $1.45 million from the State of Oregon Special Public Works Fund with up to $750,000 forgiven as a grant. This resolution is required because Business Oregon did require very specific language in the resolution that we had passed originally. So we didn't meet their, their requirements. So this resolution meets that terms. Cost implications are that debt service payments will begin 12 months after closeout of the loan. So that means after we've fully executed it, this is a reimbursable loan product. So as we spend the dollars, we will submit for reimbursement. And when we finally close that out, 12 months after that, the, the payments will begin. Loans over 10 years at 1% interest for the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund funds and 1.08% for the Special Public Works funds. Loan proceeds may only pay for engineering services and do not cover any construction activities. So this is very helpful to get us to pay, it'll pay for the entire design plus most of the pre-design activities that we've already done. So we do have a call to action for you with the loan, with the couple of options before there. To get to the question, though, I'm going to jump forward two slides and then I'll come back to this. In regards to the cost of the bill, the way that the, the term is written, it's, you want to jump right to that $7,500, that's 7,500 gallons. But your utility bill is comprised of a meter-based charge as well as the water treatment plant surcharge and a franchise fee. So when we look at the cost of water for 7,500 gallons, we have a total cost of $51.31 for just the water portion of your utility bill. So it's not just the water component. So when you have So it's not just the water component. So when you have 7,500 gallons, that's 10 units of water. You're paying for five units of water at Tier One. You're paying for five units of water at Tier Two, plus all the other fees. So we meet the affordability criteria that the State of Oregon sets for these funds, which is also why we also qualified for such a very, very low interest rate. 1% is tremendous interest rate today. So hopefully, that answers the question regarding that point. So take any questions that the council has.
Brian?
Thank you, Jason. That explained that clearly. Right below that, there's a, there's a sentence that says, "Interest accrues from the project completion date at the rate of 2.52%."
That's if we fall below that quotient. I actually called to ask Business Oregon that exact question.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And with regards to this loan, I know that we're in an interesting place with the water treatment plant right now, so is this something to where we're not going to be expending these funds before we know the outcome of the federal grant opportunity?
Yes and no. So we're actually gonna use a lot of these funds to pay for activities that have already occurred. So technology selection, membrane selection, several million dollars of previous expenses, we will be submitting to Business Oregon and getting back cash that we can then use towards the water plant, because that, it's much more effective to use that 1% money, and then also for any pre-design activities that move forward. Because we still have some, some work that's occurring, although we're in a bit of a holding pattern, to be quite honest.
So do you anticipate there being any significant design expenses between now and the awarding of the brick grant?
The award of the brick grant will probably be about a year out. We'll find out in August whether we're, we get it or whether we'll be eligible, and then there's still a negotiation process through FEMA. I don't know that there will be significant expenses, but as I said before, we've already got a couple of million dollars of expenses that we'll now be negotiating with Business Oregon, if you approve this tonight, to be able to get cash recovered, because that, as I said, that cash is much more beneficial in 1% interest, and we can earn, Jay still get mad at me, because it's not, we're not using the loan proceeds to earn interest. We're using loan proceeds to reimburse us for dollars that we've already expended so that we can use our cash to earn more interest.
I see. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Okay. And then we also had a start item number I.
Sorry, this isn't gonna be my last presentation tonight. So this is about the investment policy. And so we started our investment advisor contract as of October 1st, 2022. As part of the contract, GPA collaborates with the city for edits to the city's investment policy, and that's part of the provisions in the contract. This rounds of edits are quite large. There's about eight pages of edits. But most of these are cosmetic in nature to align with, more closely with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board's model policy. So these edits won't change current practice. This is, again, more cosmetic, and GPA supplied another memo in your packet, Exhibit 2, outlining the changes. So not including the policy are that direction of the $3 million in local banks for CD. So just as an FYI of our investment policy, you can tell that this year, we're doing quite well as far as our interest revenue. So we're, as of yesterday, a little bit over $2 million. You could see that's a high over the last 10 years. So the cost implication of our investment policy changes, there is no cost, because GPA is under contract for another four-ish more years and is included in the future budgeting. So the call to action and why it's starred is there are a lot of edits here. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, you know?
Questions? Nope. Thank you.
I just, I just had one question, and that is, part of the contract was that every year, we would do just like we did tonight and take a look at if there's anything from Schedule A and that sort of thing. Is, is that part of that four-year contract?
So, so that's part of the five-year total contract. We have some auditing standards that we need to have this policy actually renewed every year, then it comes in front of you as a board. And I did miss a piece. They are planning, coming sometime in the fall of this year, to actually give a presentation and talk about what me and them talk about on a day-to-day basis, and as well as go over the things that they see for us to do potentially in the future. We have a very short-term liquidity. We invest between a three, a zero and three-year. Our policy allows up to 5.25 years for just kind of the maximum. And so they'll kind of go through whether we should be elongating it, but we also look into large construction projects and things like that, and the need for cash. So it's probably a good thing for you guys to probably hear, and that's a presentation that'll probably come sometime in the fall.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Do either of us need to be quoted on separately?
Yeah, we had had a request to vote on E separately, so let's go ahead and read the rest of the consent agenda, and we'll come back to that one.
Okay, so consent agenda for June 7th, 2023. Item A, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the 2021 Safe Routes to School Phase One, project number GR 6410, amen. B, resolution continuing membership in the City County Insurance Services property, general liability automobile pool. C, resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application and upon award, enter into an agreement for the Inflation Reduction Act Urban and Community Forest Grant for the city's urban tree canopy. D, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute task order number 46 with a wastewater master services provider, Corello, engineers for services relating to designing sewer infrastructure to serve the Spalding Industrial Park. F, resolution authorizing a loan from the water fund by entering into a contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority. G, resolution authorizing the city manager contract with State Accident Insurance Fund Corporation for workers' compensation insurance for 2024, 2024. H, resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a competitive grant application through Josephine County to the Oregon Department of Emergency Management, and upon award, enter an agreement with OEM for a Lenco Bearcat armored vehicle. I, motion to re-adopt the city's investment policy. J, motion acknowledging the receipt of the monthly investment report for April 2023. K, motion approving the minutes of the city council's special meeting, May 15th, and the minutes of the city council for May 17th. Motion acknowledging the minutes of the Historical Buildings and Site Commission, April 13. Parks Advisory Committee, April 13. Urban Area Planning Commission, April 26. The Minutes of the Sustainable and Energy Action Task Force, of April 12. The Minutes of the Committee on Public Art, April 11. And motion acknowledging the Minutes of Collaborative Economic Development Committee, April 27. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by Vanessa. All right, Val, you made the motion to approve the consent agenda. How do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, and back to item E.
Valerie? I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing, no, not, resolution authorizing a loan from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund by entering into a contract with the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority.
Seconded by Dwayne. And Valerie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. All right. Need a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Seconded by Rick. Thank you. All in favor of adjourning the council meeting and convening the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Council action item. JC, take it away.
I think this is my last one, so. So this is for... So just as a reminder, supplemental budget can be used when something occurs that is not known during the regular budget process. It requires a published notice, which we did in the Courier on May 31st, and the resolution must state the need, purpose, and amount, and can be adopted at a regular meeting, which is this, for things that are less than 10%, which is this, and a public hearing is required if the change is more than 10%, which we do not have. So the need stems from August 3rd, 2022. The URA Board or council approved a grant for the Bohemian Bar and Bistro for $55,000. We need to increase materials and services as far as an appropriation to make grand expenditures before the year end. And as you can see, that's just a move from capital outlay into materials and services. This has a fund balance impact, but planned for fiscal year 2024 budgeting, as you guys had approved it back in August. So the call to action is today, would be to potentially adopt the supplemental budget or not adopt the supplemental budget, and there is a potential motion there.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions. All right, this is a council action item, or a, I guess, URA action item. Is there anyone who wanted to speak on this issue? Nope. We'll close public comment and turn it back to the Urban Renewal Agency. Joel?
So I don't want to cut off any comments. I was gonna make a motion. I guess we can comment under the motion. I move to approve the resolution to adopt supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023. This was actually an item that we voted on earlier, so, thank you, Mayor.
Is there a second? Valerie, any discussion on that? All right, Joel, you made the motion to approve the resolution. How do you vote?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And that means it's time to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting and move back to the council. Valerie?
I'd like to adjourn the Urban Renewal meeting and return to a regular council meeting.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are back to the regular council meeting. And matters from Mayor and council, do you have anything you wanted to bring up tonight? Go ahead, Joel.
I just want to make a, a short comment. I want to honor my dad and my, and the vets. I think it's important. My dad told me, he was, he graduated from high school in 1940, joined the Marine Corps. His mother was a maid, and Marines didn't walk up the gangplank of the Air Force aircraft carrier to go to the Pacific. They had to climb up the netting on the side. That's what Marines do. And the sergeant told them before they left, "You send a letter home, because you're not coming back." This was a 19-year-old kid. His, his senior sergeant told him to send a letter home and get his things in order, because he's not coming home. And then he told me, when he slept at night, the Japanese microphones came through saying, "Yankee, in the morning, you die." And then this 19-year-old kid had a machine gun that killed probably thousands of Japanese soldiers as they rushed towards him. He had to deal with that as a 19-year-old. That's just one example. But our vets have done a lot, and I also need to honor my dad in terms of Father's Day. He's no longer with us. There were a lot of dads that did that to him and didn't come home. So anyway, I felt the need to share that.
Anybody else? Brian?
Yeah, can we address the Tussing Park bathroom issue? I think it's appropriate to get at least one more porta potty over there or open the permanent bathrooms, something to resolve or alleviate the situation until we deal with these ordinances in a couple of weeks. Feel free to speak up, councillors.
Vanessa?
I second that.
Rick? Is saying yes, he supports that?
I say yes. I was just wondering why you didn't make, if it needed to be a motion, but I'll support that.
All right, well, we have at least five councillors in support. Do you want a formal motion?
No, I don't think a formal motion is necessary, but if you'd like to make one, you can.
Okay. Thank you for getting some bathrooms added in Tussing Park. Anything further, council? All right, any comments from staff tonight?
I just wanted to highlight that the listening and learning session that we had on June 1st, we've had over 2,600 views on YouTube.
Well, yeah, it seems like it was fairly well-received, so thanks to the four of you who hosted that.
Yeah, I would just like to add how positive it was and how great format that I really liked it, because it took a lot of the emotion out, but got the questions answered. So thank you for putting it together. You did a nice job.
All right, I don't think we have anything left. Brian?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Val. All in favor of adjourning tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero.